Check. One, two, check, 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 check.
No, his mom actually does. But, uh, no, he works for Amgen in Thousand Oaks, it's a biotech company. Um, they, I love flying aliens.
Check. Check, check, check. Four, three, two, one.
Commission for May the 13th, if you'll join me in the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Ms. Oppen, would you do the TV coverage announcement, or the lack of it, I guess?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This planning commission hearing will not be televised live today. Re-broadcast of this planning commission hearing will be on Friday, May 15th, Saturday, May 16th, and Sunday, May 17th at 5:00 PM, Sunday, May 17th at 10:00 AM, and Monday, May 18th at 9:00 AM on CSB TV, Channel 20. And for the roll call, Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
Commissioner Blau?
Here.
Thank you.
And you need to have those mic pretty close to you. Thank you. And now it's time for Ms. Black to give us the Agenda status report.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This morning, we have one item on the agenda. It's the Santinas Community Plan, and we're ready to move forward with that item.
Great, thank you. And the projection report.
So, Mr. Chair, your next hearing will be on June 3rd. We have not selected a location for that meeting yet, and we will be discussing it at the conclusion of this meeting, June 3rd, excuse me. And that meeting is primarily to continue our discussions of the Santinas Community Plan. We have one other item on that agenda, and that is the time extension due to economic hardship ordinance amendment that we're proposing, the commission recommended adoption to the board. We have a hearing scheduled on June 17th as well, and that meeting will be in Santa Barbara. Your next meeting will be a special meeting on June 29th, which is a Monday. That's anticipated to be the concluding hearing on the Santinas Community Plan, and we've not yet selected a location for that meeting either. And then, June 1st and June 8th, the commission is scheduled to meet both in Santa Maria and the 15th in Santa Barbara. I mean, in June 1st, July 1st and 8th in Santa Barbara, July 15th in Santa Maria.
Any comments or questions by commissioners? Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Black, considering the Jesus City Fire's effect on the Santa Barbara Botanic Garden, do you anticipate that that hearing will go forward or not be canceled? Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, that's a very good question. I don't think we know at this point whether or not it will go forward. We have postponed the Historic Landmarks Advisory Committee meeting, which was to occur on Monday. I would imagine that won't be held for several weeks, so it really, it really depends on how the Botanic Garden wishes to proceed. We're certainly getting close to ready with our documentation. And that's, that's all I was going to report.
Thank you. At this time, this is a time period where we allow for public comment for any item not on today's agenda. So if there's anyone who wishes to speak on any item that's not on today's agenda, would you please raise your hand or come to the microphone? Yes ma'am, I see one. Do you have a speaker slip, my chance? Okay. You are Shelley?
Yes.
And you're speaking not on the item before us today? I think you're confused. I think you want to speak on the community plan, am I correct?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, that's great, thanks. Okay, not, not seeing any, we'll, we'll move forward. Now it's time for Planning Commissioners Information Reports. Do we have any of those? For those of you that do want to speak on today's item, if you'll give them to one of the persons, I'll take this one, but normally just give them to one of the staff members at the blue desk, or David Way in the back. See David? Go ahead and speak now, then here. Are you talking about the plan, or something else? Then you, it's not this time, it's a little bit later, shortly. Okay, Commissioners Information Reports. Seeing no one grab a microphone, we'll go to Planning Development Divisional briefings.
Mr. Chair, we don't have any briefings this morning.
And Director's Report today?
Yes, I'll give a very brief Director's Report. The Board of Supervisors did meet yesterday. They didn't have any planning permit items on their agenda. They did take up the matter of the grand jury report on committees, including the Housing Advisory Committee, the Housing Policy Committee, and the Plant Process Improvement Committee. And the board did approve sending a letter in response to the grand jury. As, as your commission's fully aware, we are starting to move into recovery efforts from the Jesus City Fire. We've almost concluded our damage assessment. I believe we're at 72 residences destroyed in the County of Santa Barbara, and several in the city as well. We are going to be looking at opening a recovery center similar to the recovery center for the T-Fire. We have already selected case managers for the affected properties, and people can certainly contact Building and Safety or the Planning and Development Counter and get information about their case planners to help them through, through this difficult process.
Thank you. Any questions? Not seeing any, then, then we'll go forward, and if, Ms. Oppen, if you'll read our item into the record this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department to consider case numbers 09 GPA 1, 09 GPA 2, 09 RZN 7, and 09 ORD 10, and to recommend that the Board of Supervisors amend the Santa Barbara County Comprehensive Plan through adoption of the Santinas Valley Community Plan, which entails specific map and text amendments to the land use element and circulation element of the Santa Barbara County Comprehensive Plan and map and text amendments to the Land Use and Development Code, Chapter 35 zoning of the Santa Barbara County Code, and to certify the Santinas Community Plan Final EIR 08 EIR 4 as adequate environmental review for case number 09 GPA 1, 09 GPA 2, 09 RZN 7, and 09 ORD 10 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Thank you. Ms. Black, do we have a staff report, or?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe Mr. Johnson will be presenting the staff's report.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Good morning, Commissioner Blau and members of the commission. Derek Johnson, Director of Long Range Planning. Just to introduce some of the staff, to my right, I have Brian Tetley in my office, Justin Feig. We have Mr. John Justice, who is the independent coordinator, who is required under the county's SEQA guidelines to ensure the adequacy of the environmental document that is being proposed for your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to support the policy changes that are contained in the initiated draft in the community plan, and also in staff's recommendation to support alternative two, which is the downzone alternative. Just following on from the hearing from May 4th, which we provided a fairly lengthy presentation of the main tenets of the Santinas Community Plan, in addition to some of the significant findings that were contained in the EIR. Today's presentation is going to provide just a brief overview of what was covered on the 4th, and then largely focus on the questions that were, were made from the planning commissioners at the conclusion of the May 4th meeting. We did last Friday provide an additional memorandum to the commission that, in summary, provided an overview of the issues that the commissioners did raise. Today's presentation is, I think, going to amplify on some of those issues, in addition to address some of the issues that we've heard in course of the comments that we've received since that May 4th meeting. One point that I do want to make along the way is, before we get into public comment, is if there are questions that the commissioners may have about some of the material that staff has provided last week, or in the course of today's presentation, certainly we would stop along the way and take the time to go through that material. I think, you know, as we go through these meetings, we're going to boil down the issues to, I think, some of the, the kernel of the, of some of the issue, policy issue areas, and certainly whatever time that the commission wants to delve into those policy areas or the analysis contained in the EIR, staff is prepared to, you know, address those questions as they come up. So, in recap, again, we did provide that presentation to you on the May 4th. We did provide an overview of the recommendation, particularly, we spent a significant amount of time talking about the downzone alternative for recommendation that the board for adoption. We did provide a copy of the planning commission memo in response to questions, and today, we're going to cover some of those key issues. Before I jump into that, I do want to mention that two days after the May 4th meeting, we did go to the County of Santa Barbara Agriculture Advisory Committee. We, because there is a large portion of this planning area, and Santinas Valley is certainly a key stronghold within Santa Barbara County in terms of agricultural viability and production, we felt it was appropriate that we go to the AAC and receive their input now that the final EIR was out. And, in summary, and we will provide a copy of you, to you as it becomes available, a copy of the action letter that came out of that hearing. There were, I think, four, or three key portions of their recommendation. And the recommendations that came out of that hearing were to reduce the boundary, so it was coterminous with the existing rural boundary line. We've got a map that Chairman Blau requested to be provided to the commission, and we're going to provide a summary of what that community plan boundary would look like. The second recommendation was there should be no conversion of existing lots in the Ag 2 zoning within the planning area. And sites within the rural boundary line that are identified for the downzone alternative should be studied for ag potential before rezoning is determined. And then, finally, study the appropriateness of retaining existing Ag 2 lots within the rural boundary line. I believe there's one of those lots that is within the inter-rural area that's between the townships of Santinas and Los Olivos. I think that's the summary of their feedback. I don't know if anyone that's here today from the AAC would want to amplify upon that, but certainly we'll provide you a copy of the, of the action summary in the minutes to you as that becomes available. Now, by way of background, just to make sure that everyone is familiar, I know this has been a long process to get to where we are today. And I think a lot of people are certainly familiar with the Draft Santinas Community Plan. That was the document that was initiated for environmental review back in September of 2006 by the Board of Supervisors. It was a policy document that reflected the hard work and thinking of both the GV PAC and the VPAC, beginning with some of the hard work that was done as part of the valley blueprint. Once the board made their decision back in September of 2006 to initiate that plan, under California Environmental Quality Act, we were required under the law to prepare an environmental impact report to take a look at the environmental impacts associated with changing the policy framework for the Santinas Valley. As part of that, staff retained an outside consultant, Rincon consultants, to prepare a voluminous EIR. And what that EIR does, which in just the two documents are, we've got the plan, and on the right, we've got the EIR. The EIR feeds back mitigations back into the plan. It takes a look at issues like traffic, biology, air quality, aesthetics, historical and cultural resources, and also looks at alternatives that are required to be studied under the law. And as appropriate, it feeds back those mitigations to make sure that the policies address any of the environmental impacts that might occur as a result of the build-out horizon of the community plan. In summary, well, what does the, the Santinas Community Plan do? There are other regions, nine other regions in the County of Santa Barbara that have community plans. Areas like Galita, Mission Canyon is currently considering their own community plans, Summerlin, Montecito, Orkut. And what these community plans do is they update the 1980-1981 Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, they update the land use element and the circulation element. The intent is to create a focused planning document for the region that represents the norms and values and the desires and wishes of the community in terms of what they want to see moving forward over a 20-year horizon. That process of determining what's appropriate for the valley in terms of growth and development is largely a part, is really worked through the GPAC process, where a Citizens Advisory Committee comes up with a draft recommendation and forwards that on to the Board of Supervisors. And that's where we stand today with an EIR that looked at that particular document. The key elements of the plan are mixed-use overlay within the townships of Santinas and Los Olivos. I'm going to just talk a little bit about those. There were four affordable housing sites that were studied in the, in the EIR. And this was an outgrowth at the time when the plan was being developed. The State of California had handed down its Regional Housing Needs Assessment. All the areas of the county were asked to do what was deemed to be their fair share at looking at affordable housing. And ultimately, the VPAC, in working with different groups throughout the Santinas Valley, determined that four sites should be studied in terms of what they deemed as the core approach to providing housing in the Santinas Valley. As part of the project description, there was also a proposed redesign control overlay, and that was applied to key areas in the Santinas Valley. And that's specifically to make sure as, as development does come forward, that it comes forward with a way that respects the aesthetic heritage and, and quality of, of the built environment, I think, that people expect in the valley. Last is the Heritage Sites Overlay, which is a new proposed overlay that would be, become a part of the Land Use Development Code should the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission not recommend the downzone alternative. And this specifically would require new specific findings on particular properties should they want to subdivide any further. This is a graphic that we, we put together that we thought might be illustrative to represent what we think to be kind of the impacts associated with the plan. Clearly, what the EIR concluded was that the no-project alternative, so if you think of this diagram and as, as kind of an impact diagram, the larger the circle, meaning the larger the impact. The no-project alternative was ultimately determined to be, to have the biggest impact, and it was determined to be not the preferred project that was analyzed. Next was the Santinas Community Plan. And you can see, and let me just step back, is the no-project alternative. Today, we have 135 policies that are in our general plan that apply to development throughout, in, throughout the Santa Barbara County, and today only specifically to the Santinas Valley. The mitigations, it was only, ultimately determined that the 225 new policies and the new mitigation measures as a result of the plan would ultimately bring down the footprint and reduce the level of impacts. And you can see the number of the, and this is despite the fact that the growth is essentially the same between the no-project alternative status quo and adoption of, and adoption of the plan. But what it does is significantly reduce the amount of impacts. And then next was the downzone alternative, and this was identified by the VPAC. It's a, was found in Appendix K of the Santinas Plan. And you can see what the EIR ultimately concluded, and this is, again, just illustrative. It's not meant to provide any sort of scale of impacts. There was a slight reduction of impacts should the planning commission, the board, ultimately decide to proceed with the downzone alternative. We see that the difference between the build-out over a 20-year horizon between the downzone alternative, 496 units, and 516 units either under the plan or the, or status quo, there was a very small amount of difference. Yet, nonetheless, the EIR did conclude that there would be a small amount less of impacts. And thus, that was the, one of the reasons behind staff's recommendations was that qualitative and quantitative analysis of the downzone alternative. And specifically, going back to one of the key goals of the Santinas Plan, and that goal is really to maintain the valley as it stands today. This is really a plan that doesn't seek to change the valley in any meaningful fashion, but to, to add additional policies and development standards so that as new development comes forward that's permitted under today's comprehensive plan is done as, done in a manner that's compatible with the existing valley character and nature. The downzone alternative in particular looks at land use designations and zoning for 119 parcels over the full span of the plan. This is the theoretical maximum, which we don't believe we would get to the full build-out of the plan for a 50-year time horizon. It would be 172 units less. What it would do on particular parcels, it would preclude further subdivision. It would reduce the amount of vehicles miles traveled, and particularly, it would reduce the average daily trips, that's the ADT number, throughout the valley by about 841 trips per day. And the EIR ultimately concluded that there would be incremental reduction of wastewater, water and solid waste impacts. Just a little bit about the, the mixed-use overlay, and this is some of the material we provided at the last meeting. Again, it's to create the opportunities for infill housing and greater particular residential growth compared to commercial growth within the Los Olivos and Santinas townships, promoting the pedestrian character of the old-town areas, reducing the regulatory barriers to mixed-use development, making in some cases it by right to have residential within the mixed-use overlay zone. And then specifically prohibiting uses that were in conflict with the rural ambiance of the, of these towns. And, for example, gas stations and service stations are generally felt to be, and thought to be incompatible with mixed types of use and development. Well, what are the, what are the standards? Again, 25% essentially by right, up to 66% with a major CUP, 25 to 50% with a minor CUP. So there's some fairly, still some significant thresholds that need to be in process to go through should a property owner want to build mixed-use development within the townships at greater than the 25% that's specifically allowed by right. One of the questions that came up from the commissioners had to do with mixed-use parking. And the, in the overlay, the overlay proposes to reduce the commercial parking requirement by 50%. And the review authority, whether it's the zoning administrator, or the, in some cases, the, the planning commission, they would have the discretion to be flexible in providing more or less of that parking if particular findings can be made. And those findings are that adequate parking is found on the street, that the project's parcel and configuration doesn't allow for driveway access, that, that would otherwise impede the kind of pedestrian safety or streetscape aesthetics, and that a shared parking agreement that's foreign acceptable to county council is executed and recorded by the applicant. And I think one of the questions that Chairman Blau had relative to that particular issue was, well, how does that agreement occur? And just to clarify, that's not an agreement between two business owners, but it's an agreement between the respective property owners. And recognizing that certainly, when a project comes forward, there may be uses in mind, whether it's a restaurant or some sort of storefront, retail storefront, and those businesses certainly change. And I think one of the concerns, if I'm reading the Commissioner Blau's question, is that, you know, how, how do you predict moving forward whether or not, based on that current use, that shared parking agreement between property owners will be adequate, given the changing nature of the businesses? And I think that's something that we'll need to address as projects come forward, whether it remains a principal policy tenant and an ability to take advantage of an exemption of the parking. That'll be something that your commission want to weigh on and make a recommendation to the board as it moves forward. In terms of that, talked a little bit about this, and there is provisions within the Land Use Development Code that currently allow for conjunctive use, and this simply just amplifies upon those existing provisions. One aspect of the mixed-use overlay is that 25% of the residential units need to be rented to very low or low-income households. And I'm going to talk about, well, what is very low and low-income households? Again, this is part of getting back to the core approach for providing housy, with housing, affordable housing within the Santinas Valley. It was ultimately determined that higher-density development was not necessarily appropriate. There wasn't a lot of sites to take a look at beyond the ones that we analyzed in our EIR as part of, part of the project description. And so, it was felt that the core approach should be to require affordable housing as part of mixed-use development. So the proposed policies and overlay within the mixed-use overlay require 25% of those units to be rented to very low or low-income households. If, at the end of the day, we end up in a fractional unit, and this is something that I explained at the last meeting, there is the ability for property owners as part of that project to pay an in-lube fee consistent with the in-lube fee guidelines that are contained within the housing element. Just briefly, where is the mixed-use overlay? Essentially, it's contained within the Santinas commercial townships. Doesn't really spread into the residential areas. It's limited to, its application to the C1 and C2 zone districts. Within Los Olivos, it's contained just in the C2 zone district as well, which the areas of which people commonly refer to as the kind of downtown area. of which people commonly refer to as the kind of downtown areas. In terms of the D-Design overlay, I think there was a question then, that has been raised by the public about whether or not, what is the existing overlay and how is it applied? There are existing parcels, and those are shown in this lighter green that are currently have a D-Design overlay, and those are parcels that were ultimately determined in the past to be visible. Beyond that, because Highway 154 is a designated scenic highway in our scenic highways element, there is an overlay that extends 2,000 feet on either side of the center line of the roadway. So in terms of the actual additional areas, in terms of applicability, it's really through the core area of Alamo-Pintado area as you leave Highway 154, and it connects with 101, and then along the 246 corridor between Beelton and Solvang, and Beelton as you leave town towards Lompoc. You know, there is a slight change, I think there was a question that was raised, why it wasn't provided over the whole, over the entire planning area? And that was ultimately, I think, a policy recommendation by the PAC and G-PAC to specifically target those areas where there's some high visibility related to well-traveled roadways and scenic corridors. Just as a refresher, the heritage site overlay, this was ultimately decided upon by the VPAC at their April 2006 meeting. The VPAC was, was wrestling between what to study in terms of the project description in the final, in the EIR. And the heritage sites overlay was a concept that came forward in early February of that year, and the records indicated it may come forward as soon as January. And this was studied and looked at as an alternative to the downzone, specifically, as I mentioned previously, the kind of summary of the, of the plan, to come up with a new overlay to require a set of specific findings that the commission and the Board would need to make, should there be subdivisions of particular properties. And the, the properties that were identified were ones that were intended with this particular overlay to make sure that if there were subdivisions, that it was done in a manner that preserved the rural aesthetic at the valley and township gateway areas, maintaining separation between the townships, and providing compatibility in lot size between the neighboring parcels. So there was some, I think, a careful process that the VPAC and the G-PAC used ultimately to arrive at these particular parcels and their consideration for the heritage site overlay. Again, one other piece just to make clear is that this new overlay that would be incorporated into the Land Use Development Code, that would not occur should the commission and the Board ultimately decide that the downzone alternative is the alternative that would be adopted as part of the, the plan. In terms of noticing, there were some questions that were raised about the specific noticing relative to sites that were being considered for heritage site overlay and the downzone alternative. The VPAC began their deliberations on the heritage site overlay back in February through April 2006. There was, the, the records show that there was very consistent noticing that was done to the interested parties list, in addition to op-eds that were sent out by the chairman on a, on a frequent basis, that were summarizing some of the policy deliberations and considerations that were being conducted by the, by the VPAC. Those were meetings that were certainly well-attended in this facility, and I just highlighted some of the dates where specifically some of the, the considerable policy changes were, were being considered by the, by the VPAC. Their recommendation was ultimately forwarded to the Board of Supervisors in April of 2006, and then the Board of Supervisors began the process of deliberating the plan for initiation of environmental review. And that first hearing occurred on July 18th of 2006. And at that time, our office sent out a notice to every single property owner within the planning area, indicating that you, that they were receiving this notice because of A, they were, their property was included as part of the Saniness Valley Community Plan, or B, the county was considering a rezone or a general plan amendment that would affect their particular property. Ultimately, the Board did not make a decision at the July 18th meeting. They had a series of meetings that were continued. They held an all-day, excuse me, not all-day, they held an evening meeting here at the Veterans Hall that was comprised of a subcommittee of Supervisors Firestone and Gray, which, again, we, we noticed everyone in the valley, and they came to this, they were invited to come to this particular hearing. And then on September 26th, the Board made a determination to, to initiate the Saniness Valley Community Plan that contained the rezones and general plan amendments for environmental review. Following that, we released our NOP, which is the document that essentially, that looks to scope our EIR. We, again, used, used the interested parties list to make sure that everyone was, and sent out notices, and put notices in the paper, advertising that we were initiating the process to prepare that EIR. Ultimately, we released an EIR in June of 2008. We held a hearing on the EIR, again, in this room, where it was very well-advertised to the interested parties list, and we received a considerable amount of comments at the hearing in July of 2008, which then leads us to the next round of notification that occurred that kicked off the series of Planning Commission hearings to make a recommendation to the Board. And in that case, we did two specific notices. We did one notice that was published in the newspaper, there was a general notice announcing the series of Planning Commission hearings that were going to take place. That notice was sent by postcard and email to everyone who was in our interested parties list. In addition to that, and as required under the California Government Code, we sent over 890 individual notices to property owners that were going to be affected by a rezone or a general plan amendment. And that notice was very specific in that it indicated that property owners were receiving this notice because the county was considering a rezone or a general plan amendment of that, of their property. And the notices that were sent out for the May 4th and the subsequent hearings is contained in attachment four of the Planning Commission's memo, additional memorandum that was distributed And now getting into the downzone alternative parcels, again, this was the Appendix K of the Saniness Community Plan. This was ultimately the, the compromise agreement that was reached by the VPAC to study this particular policy option as an alternative to the heritage sites overlay. I talked previously about what the significant difference and what the EIR concluded relative to that. One of the questions that came up at the, at the last meeting was non-conforming lots, and there was some questions about, well, how, how many would we create? And we wanted to provide a little context about non-conforming lots. Today, we have, out of the 3,901 lots within the Saniness Valley, approximately one-third, or 1,321 lots are non-conforming as to size today. And that's roughly comports to what we see countywide. There's about a little over 48,000 lots in the county, and approximately 18,000 of the lots countywide are non-conforming as to lot size. What is the Saniness Community Plan in terms of the policy changes? How would it affect non-conforming lots in terms of the inventory looking forward? The initiated plan would, would add an additional seven non-conforming lots to the inventory of those lots within the planning area, and the downzone alternative would add an additional 47. So there's a incremental increase in terms of the non-conforming lots, based upon either the initiated plan or the downzone alternative. Well, what, I think one of the questions has come up is, you know, non-conforming lots as to lot size, and what can you do, and what does the county, what does the Land Use Development Code say about non-conform, non-conforming lots? And property owners have the same rights as they do to develop their property, rebuild their property, add on to their property as they would to a conforming lot. The only real difference is distinction is the inability to subdivide. And that is the, the key issue, I think, that the land use, and the distinction that the Land Use Development Code makes. Just in terms of the analytics and what our analysis showed, the green parcels that are shown on this map indicate the, the existing non-conforming lots. The purple is the exist, the additional lots that would be created, as, non-conforming lots would be created through the downzone alternative. And then this lighter yellow here shows the seven lots that would be created in terms of the initiated plan. And what is a, and what's the definition of, of a non-conforming lot? It's the, a lot that the dimensions or location are, which were lawful prior to the effective date of the Development Code or any amendments, and that has not conformed to the present regulations of the Development Code. The LUDC is clear that legally-created lots, even if conforming as to size, may be developed with a residence if the lot complies with all the other requirements of the LUDC. Again, the issue is really regarding the ability to subdivision, to subdivide in non-conforming lots. The lot lines are, adjustments are allowed for non-conforming lots. One other question that has come up is the ability to be able to finance non-conforming lots and be able to get private lending on those lots. And certainly, it's our understanding that there is, there is no challenge to getting lending on non-conforming lots. Another question that has come up is regarding tax assessments. And the way that the, the county assesses property is based upon the point of sale and in term, determine ultimately the ad valorem tax. It doesn't particularly look at future use. But at the, at the end of the day, should a property owner, if there were to be lots that were created that were non-conforming, and were unable to subdivide, and the property owner felt that they should be reassessed, the county certainly has a process that they could avail themselves of to take advantage of that process to look at a reassessment. So kind of thinking about the non-conforming issue, we've got the non-conforming lots, non-conforming structures, and then uses. Now talk a little bit about the non-conforming structure. A non-conforming structure doesn't conform to the limits of the zone district. It would, a non-conforming structure is frequently one that was built before the county enacted what we, we were determining modern ordinances. It's our analysis that any of the non-conforming lots that would be created wouldn't create concurrent non-conforming structures. In particular, where those non-conforming lots would be created, it's switching between Ag-1 and Ag-2 zone districts. And Brian's going to talk a little bit about the distinction and development standards between those two zone districts, particularly the uses and the standards here. I'm going to, well, just what, before he jumps into that, in terms of non-conforming use, that's the third category, and that's a use where we, we would see, for example, a commercial storefront that's in a residential area, for example. That's a, a non-conforming use. And there's legal non-conforming uses, and that's the, and that's the example where that storefront was around prior to when the county moved forward with a zone district back in the 1980s, or, or subsequent amendments, that would have created that storefront in that residential area to be illegal, not, or, excuse me, illegal non-conforming use. I'm going to turn the second bullet over to Brian. He's going to talk a little bit about the uses between Ag-2 and 1-zone, since there's been some questions that have been raised about the distinction between the uses and the permit pass between those respective zone districts.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Chair. In general, and as we thought it'd be of interest to the commission and the public to give a presentation and understanding the differences between allowed uses and uses requiring permits within the Ag-1 and the Ag-2 zone districts, given that, under the downzone alternative, the majority of these properties would be rezoned from Ag-1 to Ag-2. And in general, Ag-2 is a more intensive agricultural zone district and more permissive as far as uses and permit processes required to initiate new uses within the Ag-2 zone district. And this list on the slide before you, if we'll just start at the top, as far as the general agricultural grazing and cultivation activities between Ag-1 and Ag-2, that's both an allowed, of course, and exempt, use exempt from permits in both Ag-1 and Ag-2. Next, we have agricultural accessory buildings, and the process in both zone districts is a ministerial land use permit, which can be over-the-counter and a quicker process without discretion by planning and development. Next, animal keeping. There is a distinction here. We have special rules in LUDC about the keeping of animals. And an example for you is for large animals such as horse and, horses and cattle, is that in the Ag-1 zone district, there's a limit of one large animal per 20,000 square foot of land area, whereas in Ag-2, there is no limit on the number of large animals. Next, we have oil and gas, where there are special regulations for initiating those types of uses. Within the Ag-1 zone district, currently, there is restricted and require the approval of discretionary conditional use permit, and also oil drilling and production plans, whereas in the agricultural 2-zone district, only a ministerial land use permit is required. Next, under the special regulations for wineries, we wanted to make it clear that there is no distinction in those regulations between Ag-1 and Ag-2 zone district. So those special regulations apply equally to both zone districts. For equestrian facilities, Ag-1 requires a CUP, which, a conditional use permit, which is discretionary on the part of the county, given that in the Ag-1 zone district, you generally have neighbors who are closer, given the smaller overall parcel sizes, whereas in agricultural 2-zoning, it's only a ministerial land use permit required. Guest ranches are simply not an allowed use in Ag-1, again, recognizing potential land use conflicts with the small lots in the Ag-1 zones, whereas a discretionary CUP is required, and it is, it is an option that Ag-2 owners can, can opt for, given the approval of the permits. Next, we have animal hospital, which requires a minor conditional use permit in Ag-1, and only a ministerial land use permit in Ag-2. And for farm employee housing, requires a minor conditional use permit in both the Ag-1 and Ag-2 zone districts, so there's no distinction there. One use which may be of interest that is not required in Ag-2 but allowed in Ag-1 is residential second units. And either a ministerial land use permit or minor, minor conditional use permit is required in the Ag-1 zone district, depending on whether the unit is an attached unit to a main residence or a detached structure. And I also should note that- And I also should note that in a forty acre Ag One parcel, residential second units are also not allowed, so it has to be twenty acres or less. And just want to reiterate that the use, if legally developed, an existing residential second unit would be rendered a legal nonconforming use if that property were to be rezoned to Ag Two. And that that status recognizes the right of the structure, structure and use to remain while providing for reconstruction of, in case of natural disaster and the ability to, for some potential structural expansion, in some cases up to the twelve hundred square foot maximum size for residential second units. Next, briefly, as far as the structural setbacks in the two zone districts, they're identical between Agricultural One and Two. It's fifty feet from the center line of the roadway and twenty feet from the edge of right of way. Whereas in, as far as the side and rear setbacks, in Agricultural One, there's a twenty foot for both side and rear yards, whereas Ag Two has, has no side or rear setbacks. In addition, the height limits in the two zones are identical, unlimited, except thirty-five feet maximum for residential residences. And in our review of the event, in the event of potential land use conflicts between properties to be rezoned to Agricultural Two and nearby ranchet or urban uses, we feel that the permit review requirements, as we stated, in large lot sizes in these areas would largely preclude such conflicts.
Great. If you don't mind, I'm going to take a small break in your presentation right now. I have Dr. Lane, I think, that has to leave here pretty quickly. She's asked to speak, so I'm going to allow her to come speak first, and then you can continue your presentation. Dr. Lane, you want to come forward?
Ladies and gentlemen, Planning Commission.
Make sure you speak right into the mic, please. Thanks.
As a resident of Los Alajos, I speak for many of my neighbors who signed a petition last year to have the county take a look at the consequences of oversaturation of wine tasting establishments. We started this effort four years ago when we approached the VPAC, and we are still waiting for some action on this and other matters regarding Los Alajos. We want to make ourselves perfectly clear that we are not against the wine industry at all. In fact, we support it in many ways. We are merely trying to maintain a diverse, balanced community with consideration for all factions, especially children, and enforce the responsible use of alcohol. San Andres Valley has always been a community oriented place with an emphasis on children. This seems to have become a thing of the past as we look at this adult Disneyland that Los Alajos has become. A healthy community needs a plan which addresses the needs of all the people, not just the tourists. The people of the downtown area are directly impacted by the negative behaviors of the visitors, such as people vomiting in their bushes, trespassing, blocking driveways, et cetera. And we can give you pictures to show that. These people do not have a rural ranch to retreat to. This is their home. This is where they live. Of course, we cannot dictate what type of businesses are installed, but if the ABC can restrict bars, then a county plan should also be able to restrict tasting rooms. They are pretty much the same thing. There is just a giant loophole here that nobody seemed to notice. Somehow, what the ABC considers grounds for protests does not apply to non-retail tasting rooms, and those are tasting rooms which are owned by wineries. If the ABC thinks that too many bars, too close together, too close to schools, too close to churches or temples, too close to residents is a bad idea, maybe some new laws need to be made to include tasting rooms. Begging for representation, we have organized a survey that has been sent around Los Alajos door to door. It asks about eleven questions regarding issues that the local people would like addressed. They have not yet all been returned, but we did make it, but we did not, and we did not make it to every house, but it gives you an idea of what we are concerned about. Please take all of this into consideration as you finalize the community plan. If there is a way in which you could place a hold on future tasting rooms openings while determining a strategy that would be most appreciated. In our two block downtown area, there are currently eighteen to twenty, I'm not quite sure, wine tasting establishments. That seems like a lot for a two block downtown. So I can give you these copies?
Thank you.
Could we have her name, Mr. Chair?
It's Dr. Lane, and it was Shelley Lane, I believe.
And this is the original petition which you issued.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, if you will continue with your presentation out, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I move forward with the presentation, one of the follow-up. One of the follow-up items that the commission requested that staff provide, and I think this is, looks inconsistent with one of the AAC recommendations, was a, was asking staff to create a map that shows the plan area and what it would look like if the boundary were moved to be co-terminous with the existing rural boundary within the planning area. Moving the boundary would reduce the plan area from approximately three thousand nine one, nine hundred and one parcels to three thousand three hundred and sixty-six. The plan boundary would be reduced from forty-six thousand, approximately forty-six thousand acres to a little over eighteen thousand acres. The, the buildout within the planning area would be reduced by approximately thirty-three units within the planning area. But again, we don't believe that by reducing the planning area in itself, it's going to reduce the overall growth, since the areas outside the plan would continue to grow as they would, and it would be influenced by other market forces and other policy, policies that the county has in place. There has been some questions about, well, how does the plan area today and how it's proposed, that's shown on the screen, how does that compare with other planning areas that the county has in terms of the mix of rural and urban? In, in the Orkut planning area, about fifty-one percent of the planning area is in the rural area. Galida has about seventy-five percent of the planning area in the rural area. Toro Canyon's about ninety-five percent rural. Montecito, about sixty-one percent. Los Alamos is one of the few communities, and Mission Canyon is, will be as well, where the community plan boundary is, is co-terminous with the urban boundary. And how does that shape up compared to what the San Andres Plan would look like? Roughly forty-three percent of the planning area would be within the rural areas. That's not including the inter-rural areas, or about twenty-four thousand acres. So just to give you a little perspective, because some questions have been asked about that, and looking at this alternative, which again was the, your commission asked that we prepare, and I think this is the map that the AAC, that at least the idea that they had suggested would, might be an appropriate boundary for San Andres. Now shifting the commission's attention to affordable housing and some of the questions that came, that were raised by speakers and by commissioners relative to the sites and how those sites count towards any regional housing needs assessment numbers at all. And just before I walk into, and walk the commission through that discussion, I want to talk a little bit about what the VPAC did in coming up with the four sites for study in the EIR. The four sites that were studied in the EIR were, are A through, A through D. E and F were other sites that were, were considered as well by the VPAC. And again, this is looking at the, the core approach that the VPAC ultimately determined was the appropriate way to deal with affordable housing within the San Andres area. At the time, the context of that discussion was one where there was consideration that was being given by the county to look at a equal distribution of housing and housing income levels throughout housing market areas, and San Andres is one of those housing market areas. And originally, it was thought that the San Andres Valley should take up to over seven hundred units of a mix of moderate market rate, low and very low income housing. And I think the VPAC and the G-PAC ultimately rejected the basic approach that the state wants to see in terms of minimum densities required to qualify, to count, to count towards the regional housing needs assessment. The state wants to have by right zoning that guarantees at a minimum twenty units per acre. And as, as we provided to you, to the commission in our memorandum, the affordable housing overlay sites in themselves don't qualify, wouldn't count towards potential inventory that would have capacity to provide affordable housing in the future that would count towards any re-allocation. Thankfully, the, the county recently, in, in February, took action to rezone sites in Orkut, Key Sites Three and Key Sites Thirty. That, that action in combination with the adoption of the master plan for Isla Vista back in two thousand and seven, the county has asserted to the state of California that, in fact, we have met our obligations for affordable housing and providing that capacity for the two thousand and three to two thousand and eight housing element. So what would, what would these sites do looking forward? These sites certainly are sites that, you know, should a applicant come forward, and I'm referring to, let me just go to the next slide, the sites that were studied in the EIR. Basically, the way it works is there is an overlay, a property owner owns those properties could come in and build them under the base zone district, in this case, commercial or single-family residential. Or they could elect to come in and build at a higher density if they met certain income requirements that are including under the affordable housing overlay. And I talked a little bit about what those are. And so the reason the state doesn't count these units, and again, unfortunately, we don't need them at this time to meet any sort of statutory obligation, is because there is an option of the, of the property owners. Should they come in and build at those higher densities, again, down the road, we could count those units towards whatever assignment that the county may have towards very low and low income housing.
Can you focus? Some of those maps are out of focus.
You know, the quality of the maps that we have, we can certainly look to improve those. I think that's, certainly there's some of the maps around here that are around in this building, and maybe afterwards, if you can't read them too clearly, I can get you one to take a look at. In terms of affordable housing, there was a question about why were some sites chosen for twelve units per acre and one, why were some sites chosen for twenty units per acre? And again, I think the VPAC looked at the, the context of the sites that were being considered and looked at coming up with affordable housing overlay sites that ultimately would be generally compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And so C and D in particular were the, were the lower density of twelve units per acre. And again, looking at the, the fully developed, the state residential neighborhoods and feeling that those densities were appropriate for those areas compared to A and B, which were the twenty units per acre, which were on, also on Highway two forty-six, which the group said, well, the VPAC said, let's study those particular sites, let's see how they pan out, but they, they should look at a, a density that it could accommodate up to twenty units an acre. We did determine that the sites in themselves would create and contribute to a cumulative traffic problem along Highway two forty-six. We have some intersections between the county and the, and the state highway system where we're experiencing, at least in under the county's standards, that are subpar. And the EIR concluded inaccurately that some of the contribution of these particular sites would bring those intersections from LOSD to LOSE. Also, getting into the, the core approach that the community plan came up with, the mixed-use overlay, I mentioned this earlier, but just want to reiterate it again, it's the twenty-five percent of the mixed-use units have to be onsite, need to be affordable. And I'll talk a little bit about what those affordable housing, what those income guidelines look like. And because this is, because these are overlays, both in terms of the affordable housing overlay and also the mixed-use overlay, the state won't let us count these towards the, the inventory, at least that's their position, until they're actually built and there's some sort of agreement that encumbers the unit and restricts it to any specific incomes. Well, what are these affordable housing income requirements? Again, really targeting the very low and low income. We're talking about for a household of four people, a income of approximately thirty-eight thousand people, for lower income, sixty-two thousand dollars per year. So you can see the target income that the guidelines seek to provide housing for is really the workers who, it's either the ag workers or some of the service workers within, we, we hope to be the San Andres area. There was also questions about the biological resources and particularly the, the standard that was different in the plan than other areas of the county. Typically, we have a fifty-foot setback from creeks and biological resources in other areas of the county. In particular, to creeks, the plan proposes a twenty-five-foot minimum setback between stream corridors. And this, the sense was that the policy certainly provides for a more protective approach and some discretion on behalf of planners when projects do come forward, but it was felt as given the nature of the valley and the areas and constrained lot sizes, that the twenty-five-foot minimum setback was, was appropriate for the, the setting within the San Andres Valley. The commission, I believe, also wrestled with some of the conclusions of the EIR and particularly the conclusions about Class One impacts. I think that's actually the, the next slide. The EIR concluded that there would be Class One impacts as a result of the implementation of the proposed plan. And it's important to note that the Class One impacts would happen regardless of the adoption of the plan. The two hundred-plus policies and standards, along with the mitigation measures that are contained in the EIR, would certainly look to address the cumulative impacts to a whole, whole host of resources, not just biology. But nonetheless, given that there was a substantial amount of buildout would occur in both the inter-rural, rural and urban areas, and because this is a programmatic EIR, even with the forty-six policies, the standards and the, and the mitigations, which are very strong, there was a, still, still a significant amount of uncertainty that would occur that over time about the efficacy of these mitigation measures. And these are very strong mitigation measures nonetheless, but at a programmatic nature, given that there are going to be five hundred and sixteen units build out over a twenty-year time horizon and close to a thousand over full theoretical buildout, the EIR could not conclude that it would be less than significant, even with the, the policy frameworks and the set of mitigations that are part of the FEIR. Wastewater was another area that the commission had some questions on. And in particular, the plan precludes the sanitary district annexations and sewer service extensions within the inner or rural areas unless there's an overriding need to address public health and safety issues. The plan calls for sewer service feasibility studies in some of the special problems areas. Los Alajos, Ballard, and Janon Acres and Los Olivos, Ballard, and San Yen Acres in the west San Yen Es. And this is something that we've seen, the Regional Water Quality Board has certainly stepped up their scrutiny of some problem areas. And I think as we negotiate our ability to issue permits for septic systems, we're going to see additional challenges over time, particularly in special problems areas with the operation of these facilities. In some areas where there is the inability to extend municipal sewer service or it's in a special problems area, the development standards would require the installation of advanced treatment systems. And I believe you've seen one of those systems already come forward as part of a project within the Los Olivos area. Groundwater. I mentioned at the last meeting that the Public Works Department, the Water Agency, the last time that they had updated the groundwater report was back in 2005. And speaking with the Public Works Department, they are in the process of updating the groundwater report. Again, there continues to be some professional opinion and expertise differences about the status, particularly of the San Yen Es, Uplands Basin. I bring your attention to that basin because that is one of the basin that provides water to both Bulton Solvang and the unincorporated areas. And we're hoping with the, and expecting with the update, to try to be able to reconcile some of the differing opinions between the experts about the status of that basin. Nonetheless, even though there was the differing opinions about the status of that basin, the ER did conclude that it was a significant unavoidable impact, even with the mitigation measures that are part of the policy framework in the plan and also contained in the EIR. Fortunately for the Bulton and the San Yen Es River-Olivio Basin, those basins were determined ultimately to be either in surplus or have certain geological conditions that make the overdraft analysis applicable. Going to now parks and recreation, there were some questions about the use and status of Quimby fees and recreation and parks impact fees that have been collected. And the way the county approaches providing recreation in Santa Barbara County is we look at recreation demand areas. And those are areas where people would reasonably travel to go to a park or some type of facility. And the Quimby fees and the park impact fees are collected to, in essence, mitigate the impacts to park and recreation facilities. And the county has an adopted standard of one acre for every 4,700 people. The EIR ultimately concluded that with the plan and with the one small park that would be added with Los Olivos, there is ample park space within the demand area to meet the existing and future populations. We have historically, over time, given some, a small amount of money out, and this is just a summary of some recent distributions, we gave some money to the high school back in the early 1990s for field work. We've given some money to support Little League. And then back in 2002, we funded a recreational needs assessment. And ultimately, what that recreational needs assessment concluded is that certainly there's no shortage of park space within the recreational demand area. There is a shortage of facilities. And there were facilities such as soccer fields and other tennis courts and other types of facilities that were found to be in shortage. And so over time, there needs to be a developed plan or some sort of effort to address the facility shortages that we have today. One of the challenges is going to be is that we've got, you know, not a lot of money that's currently available to address those needs. And we do have some action items that are contained in the plan to specifically look at the shortage of playfields, which I think the commission has wrestled with on previous occasions. So this slide concludes staff's presentation and kind of the response and requests for information that the commission had. Just kind of looking forward from where we are today, we're here at the second hearing. The next hearing is scheduled for June 3. We have, which is tentatively scheduled as our final hearing for recommendation to the board on the June 29. We have heard loud and clear from the valley that the summertime is a hard time to be able to try to track and follow some of these big policy issues. So between the 29th and the board hearing, staff will be working on making whatever changes your commission makes on the plan in the EIR and preparing those documents for hearings that begin sometime in the fall of 2009. So staff, you know, here to answer any questions and will certainly be taking notes of what the speakers have today. And at the end of the public comment period, should the commission want us to respond to any questions or issues, we'll be happy to do that.
Commissioner Brooks has one question.
Yes, thank you, Chair Plow. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I liked how you were able to incorporate the responses to the fourth, to the overall plan. I hope that that is helpful to the audience as well as to all commissioners. I had a question about the design overlay. You mentioned that the 154 as a scenic highway is already under the design overlay. And how far out does that go versus how far does the design overlay that's proposed go on the other roads? Is there a difference as far as 2,000 feet, 1,000? That's it. Could you explain?
The distinction here is, and what you're referring to is the existing design overlay on 154. That's 2,000 feet on either side of the center line of the highway. What the design overlay does in the case of the plan is it includes the entire parcel rather than just the 2,000-feet buffer on either side of the highway. One important point of the overlay is that it exempts agricultural structures of 1,000 square feet or less from design review. Or should the project that's being proposed be outside of the view corridor in any of these areas within the design overlay? You can't see it from 154, you can't see it from 246 or from Alamo Pintado, then you're exempt from design review, period.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll do, before we take public comment, take a five-minute break, come back. Thank you. Go back on the record. Just so everyone knows what the rules are, each of the speakers I call up are allowed to speak for three minutes. You'll notice a bright red clock sitting in front of Ms. Upland. When that turns yellow, you've got an additional minute. When it turns red, I'd appreciate you being done. So the first speaker I have is, and if I pronounce your name incorrectly, I apologize upfront. Well, the name like mine, it gets pronounced Miss all the time, so I feel bad about doing it. So Arvid Schmots, followed by CJ Jackson.
Nice job. I have some concerns about the plan when I look at how big it is and how complex it is and not being trained in law or land use law or anything like that. As an individual affected by it, I think we all, who are landowners, have a problem with, how do I navigate this without spending an inordinate amount of money if I want to do anything? In any case, I'll keep it simple by just focusing on one issue where I think there's a mistake, because there's so much that you people are trying to do that once in a while there must be conflicts and mistakes that happen. We own a horse farm that's 100 acres on the, near the southern entrance from Santa Barbara into the valley. And I think when people were looking at a map without looking at elevations, they thought, well, okay, they're going to be visible from the highway, they should be in a design overlay because the aesthetic quality of what we see when we come in is important. However, if you drive along Highway 101, our property cannot be seen because Highway 101 is below the elevation of Avonville Flags, and all you see is the sight of Avonville Flags, which is not too pretty, but it's there. And there's an ag land in between those two highways, and therefore, you can't even see our property from there. But we're in a design overlay, and that's not inconsequential for us because some little things that we do otherwise, just without even needing a permit, might have to go to an architectural review board. And if we have to go to the review board, we have to get professional assistance in preparing a plan to present it competently and so forth. It's not insignificant. Otherwise, you know, something I can do in a day might take me six months to get through a permit process and eventually get permission to do it anyway. So I would ask that you look very carefully at that one little point, you could correct a mistake without any trouble to the overall plan. Our property is on Santa Rosa Road, and if you look at design overlay map, if you have one, it's on Santa Rosa Road and it's near Avonville Flags, but it isn't on Avonville Flags. There's another ag parcel between Avonville Flags and us. Our southern bound has a raised level elevation where our driveway comes in, so you can't even see into our property from Avonville Flags. So there's no reason to have us in a design overlay. The other aspect is consistency. Our neighbor to the south has a half-mile directly on the frontage of Highway 101, is not in the design overlay, and his property is visible. So it's inconsistent that that would not be in and we would be in when we're not even visible. And the other point is no other property on Santa Rosa Road is in design overlay. So how we look on Santa Rosa Road can't be the factor either.
Thank you.
Just look at that point, please.
Thank you. CJ Jackson, followed by Hazel and Joe Wells. Welcome back, CJ.
CJ Jackson, member of the public. Boy, you guys look familiar. Three basic issue areas I want to talk about. Number one, I started in this process, I was invited to join the PTA. When the EIR came out, I was invited to join the AARP, which means an awful lot of time has gone by. You have on your list, A, B, C, and D, the housing, I would like to recommend they be removed. They are a solution in search of a problem. Part of the reason of having all this time go by, the contexts change, the burdens that that was designed to address have been addressed in a superior fashion, and the burden on Highway 246 for traffic will be significant as well as some compatibility issues. And I commend the VPAC for dealing with it because it was a problem at the time, but again, over time, that context has been removed. Number two, you have a circulation element that includes Alternatives 3, 4, and 5. While I recognize that in order to address the cumulative traffic problems we have here, you need to seek alternatives. But 3, 4, and 5, I do not believe fit the model of alternatives on the one hand, because you can't do 5 without 4, you can't do 4 without 3. And 3 and 4 do not improve or enhance the problems they're attempting to address. And more importantly, what you will sacrifice in doing those in terms of farmland, residences, athletic facilities, et cetera, and the sheer financial burden, make it a very unrealistic alternative. I suppose if you want to suggest and put greater emphasis on the others, put an impossible one in. But I think having, and admittedly, it does impact my family's property, the Alisal Ranch, where all of those things would be impacted. But it also, I have traversed on horseback that real estate, and geotechnically, you face a monumental challenge. So I would like to see that removed. Finally, I'm concerned somewhat about the extension of the boundaries to the south where they seem to cross over where parcels are in and out. I don't quite understand what happens with parcels that are both within the community plan boundary where the zone doesn't change, but part of it is not. What type of conflict does that present? And we are faced with that at the Alisal for those issues. So I would like to see that subject addressed or at least defined, so I know whether or not I have a burden or a challenge to assess. Finally, one of the virtues that I would like to encourage is that this plan preserve the ability to attain to the changing environments. Over the course of these last, God forbid how many years, we have seen fluctuations and changes that bear heavily on this plan. Please preserve whatever there is, the capacity to attenuate. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Miss you guys. See ya.
See you. Thank you. Hazel and Joe, we only allow clapping for former commissioners, but other than that, Hazel and Joe Wells, followed by Trish Altarana.
Hi, my name is Joe Wells. My wife didn't want to come up, she was a little embarrassed. I'm here to speak specifically about the parcel C and D at the intersection of Highway 246 and seeing away. I'm a business owner here in Solvang and a property owner in this area. This is in reference to the rezoning of those parcels for high-density, low-income housing. We own property in the neighborhood, a one-acre parcel, and we bought our parcel specifically because of the character of the neighborhood. I think the rezoning is incompatible with the area where almost all the properties are one-acre parcels. Also, I think they're incompatible because of the traffic problem. Coming out of there in the morning, it's just terrible now. And to add another 50 units right there is, I don't know, I mean, I don't want to appear insulting, but I can't imagine having all that extra traffic coming through there. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Great, thank you. Trish. Yeah, we want to not do clapping, people, please. It was okay for CJ because we were teasing him, but please don't do that. Thank you. Go ahead, Trish.
Okay, my name is Tish Beltranena, and I represent about 25% of the properties that are proposed for downzoning. I'm not going to present their specific problems and background. I'd be happy to sit down with anyone and go over that, and we'll be submitting it on paper. I've worked in land use consulting in the San Yen Es Valley for 24 years, so I'm kind of cursed with this, what I call the TISH overlay. When I look at your maps that you are presented with, I see certificate of compliance parcels and all these other parcels that you're not seeing appear on those maps. And it makes me crazy that your staff presents these as, look at the patterns of existing parcels. And it makes me crazy that the EIR consultants calculate their formulas and things based on acreage of assessors' parcels. You are not seeing the real legal parcels out there. The downzoning alternative says it's going to eliminate 20 units over 20 years, 20 primary units. I did the math, I wrote the letter to the EIR. Because you didn't analyze legal parcels on my client's property, right there, I know that there are nine to 13 of those 20 units that really don't exist. Now, let's go on to the elimination of 111 second units, that the downzoning will eliminate the possibility of 111 second units. Wait a minute, those are affordable units. Okay, so we eliminate 111 potential affordable units that we can count with the base zoning so that we can put 115 over on a Level of Service D road with special problems around it, and we have a net gain of four units? You know, this is not an environmentally superior alternative. This is spot zoning, pretty much at its worst. And, you know, you're making a very important decision by downzoning these particular people's property, and you don't have the full information in front of you. Staff hasn't given you an analysis of each one of these sites, why they're in there. They haven't even shown you the legal parcels. So do you want to make a decision of this magnitude based on bad information, or do you really want to see the patterns of existing parcels out there to judge compatibility? Do you really want to count the actual number of non-conforming lots you're creating? All those maps, I look at them and I see the TISH overlay, and it makes me crazy because you're not giving the full story. you're not getting the full story. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, please, please. Susan Petrovich, followed by Richard Crutchfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I would like to have you look at page two of the plan, under Legal Authority, Purpose, and Intent, which is to provide policy direction to address four specific concerns: preserving viability of agriculture amidst continuing subdivision of larger working agricultural parcels into ranchettes, increasing traffic, insufficient infrastructure to accommodate new growth, and impact of expanding tourism. So, how does the final EIR and the resulting staff report propose to accomplish the purpose and intent and the primary land use goals of the San Inez Plan? Well, clustering four affordable housing sites in the San Inez Township along the Highway 246 corridor with 115 potential new units, out of a projected buildout of 500 to 800 units. Highway 246 is not only a gateway, so there goes your gateway, to much of the valley. It has the worst traffic congestion in the plan area. Its long-term projected LOS, according to the staff, is Level D or E, both of which are unacceptable by anyone's standards. The plan says it wants to preserve and enhance township gateways. That won't happen. It doesn't satisfy any state mandates, so what is the justification? What the affordable housing overlay does do, as Trish pointed out, is replace the plan's original proposal to allow scattered, limited future subdivisions into lots that are compatible with neighboring land uses. These sites would have the affordable housing potential through the residential second units and through farmworker housing, which wasn't even addressed, incidentally, in the plan, or in the environmental analysis. The RSUs would be projected to be 111 compared to the 117 affordable housing, with no count whatsoever on farmworker housing. But when you change from Ag 2 to Ag 1, you severely limit your farmworker housing. So, we have traffic that I've already addressed. We've got water service. With the RSUs, they're scattered around the valley, whereas with this affordable housing approach, they are right in the area that requires public water. We've got ID 1 telling you that it's got stressed services now, whereas if they're out in these scattered sites, they will be on private water systems that are already in existence. We've got wastewater disposal, same answer. You're going to put a heavier burden on the sewers, whereas you could be using septic out on large parcels that don't have septic problems. So, the fatal flaw is that you've got these proposed heritage sites and the down zoning that's now proposed as an alternative. The stated intent of the heritage site was to, which represents most of the proposed down zones, incidentally, is to require a higher level of scrutiny for these potential subdivisions. There are two sites that I represent, one that is way over here, way out of the traffic issues, way out of any special problems area. Another one over here, again, way out of the traffic areas, way out of these special problems areas. There's just no explanation for applying this overlay. It has nothing to do with townships. It has nothing to do with these problems, and yet, and incidentally, this one, of course, is too small to be viable. And this one has many parcels that are already established, legal parcels, that are not viable. So, none of the objectives that are stated in the plan are being met by the down zone proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Crutchfield, followed by Christina McGinnis.
Good morning. I co-chaired the San Inez Valley Blueprint with Susie Poles. And so, I guess I was at the head end of this process, and Chairman Blau, you're at the tail end. No reference to anatomical body there. But I'd like to point out that one of the things that we focused on in the Governance Subcommittee in the Blueprint was a location or locus for valley-centric issues. And I think this is a perfect example. The people in the valley have a right to have local hearings on issues that affect them. So, I'm sure that electronically we can figure out a way to have TV so that we can hear our issues here in the valley and represent ourselves. This is going to be somewhat of a retrospective, you know, from where we started and where we are now. I know Willie will disagree with me on this, but I think breaking off the rural area for consideration by the general plan was an error. The rural and the inter-rural and the cities, we're all one big bowl of a valley here. And I think that the blueprint could have been completed in probably a year as opposed to two years if we knew that was going to be the outcome. Also, I'd like to remind the people in Ag that the 40 participants in the blueprint were very Ag-oriented. We push very hard for professional agricultural planners on staff. I don't know if that's happened, but I think it should. The other thing is the blueprint dealt with six communities: Ballard, Builton, Los Lejos, San Inez, and Solvang, and the Chumash community. Several of us insisted they be included. If we don't work with the Chumash tribe and coordinate with them, the general plan is flawed on delivery, as far as I'm concerned. The tribe isn't going away. They've been here for 8,000 years. And the settlers, if we want to call ourselves that, aren't going away. The Chamberlain family has been here for centuries. So, I think it's time that we work together for mutual benefit. I understand the Chumash tribe was invited to have a representative on VPAC. They declined, and I think they were correct. It was going to be a non-voting member. Would we have told a Los Lejos resident that they would be a non-voting member? It didn't really make sense to me. That was either naive or outrageous. I think that we need to get ready and step forward to work together with the tribe. And in respect to the previous speaker, I think you can get all the additional housing you need with detached second residential units in Ag Housing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Christine McGinnis, followed by Mark Preston.
Good morning, Commissioner Blau, fellow commissioners. My name is Christina McGinnis, and I'm here today on behalf of the Open Project, which is the open space preservation and education network. It's a project of the Environmental Defense Center in Santa Barbara. And the purpose of the project is to look at agriculture, open space, and the urban rural boundary in all of unincorporated Santa Barbara County. And so, we've been actively following this San Inez Community Plan update. And I'd like to just support staff's recommendation for the down zone alternative from a land use perspective. It is the best alternative to look at long-term preservation of agriculture in the valley. One of the things that I've been doing as part of this project is I've been speaking with lots of farmers and folks who are actually doing active agriculture. And time and time again, what I've been hearing from these farmers is we need a better right to farm ordinance. We need more support in doing our active farming. So, one thing I'd like to suggest as part of this community plan update, using this plan as a catalyst, is to consider adding a dispute resolution policy as part of our right to farm ordinance. And I've appended an example of one that has been created to the letter that I submitted to your commission. And I just would like to have you consider that as adding that in as an action item. That could go in the Ag Resources section under the policy, which requires a notice to property owner. That could be done in the future, but I think it would be a really nice complement to the county's Ag buffer policy that's currently being created by the Ag planners. And so, I think that would be a very nice way to help preserve Ag. I'd also like to comment on the action that presupposes allowances for farm stays in the valley. I think that this is an issue which should be carefully reconsidered. And not to say that farm stays wouldn't have the potential to create additional income for farmers, because I do think that that is a possibility that has real potential. But I do think that the farm stays need to be very carefully considered as part of this process to make sure that the way that they are implemented is not impacting prime Ag land, that it's not creating land use conflicts with existing agricultural operations. I have heard from several farmers I've spoken with that this kind of agricultural tourism could really impact a real farming operation, not only for the property that would have a farm stay, but for properties that are neighboring to it because of traffic and safety and noise and dust and all of the things that farm stays might create. I see my time is running out here. Okay, just to briefly summarize, so I think the language of the action should be revised to just say potentially consider, rather than that they should actually be implemented. And then finally, just briefly, I just wanted to state that the county should reinstate the ESHA layers that were originally considered for this plan. And also, I agree that the minimum 50-foot setback for creeks should be implemented as part of this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Preston, followed by Barbara Meyer.
Thank you in advance for your time. I feel like I've been at this meeting since 1994, and I have to some large degree. I would just like to say, in general, I support the overall result and efforts to compromise that has been presented here. In July, I spoke to a specific nuance in the EIR regarding the traffic in Segment 2 on Page 4.4-44. Basically, it's a segment from Builton to Solvang. In my opinion, the 246 in that segment is irrevocably bottlenecked between Fifth and the casinos. The options for mitigation are not feasible, and we have to admit that going forward, rather than just put some issues out there that things can be done. Like, the bypass is pretty much a dead issue. Four-laning doesn't buy anything, because you'd have cars coming 75 miles up to Solvang and then going into two lanes again, and the idea of reversible lanes like the Golden Gate Bridge, et cetera. So, I would like to have this addressed, but I will direct my specifics to staff via our third district commissioner, Morel Brooks, and then try to have them get them to you. So, I do want to go on record about Segment 2, 4.4-44. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Meyer, followed by Nancy Emerson.
Hi, I'm Barbara Meyer. I live on Siena Way, which is one of the parcels on the same block as the parcel D proposed for the affordable housing development or rezone. I'm in opposition, obviously, to this high-density rezoning of the Raleigh and the Osaka properties from E1E, one acre, single-family homes, well, actually, those are both two acre, to high-density, 12-units-per-acre affordable housing sites. R12 is not compatible with the neighboring neighborhoods, the surrounding neighborhoods, which are generally one acre or more zoning up to 300 homes within that neighborhood, consisting of our neighborhoods, Carriage Drive, Janon, and San Inez Oaks across the street. These are 300 homes. We've canvassed the neighborhoods. They're overwhelmingly in opposition of the rezoning of two parcels within their midst. So, if there are 3,091 parcels affected by this plan, that's over 10%, or about 10% that are going to be in opposition to this. So, that's certainly not a consensus. Also, in canvassing the neighborhoods, I know that there was some comment that there was noticing put out. However, none of us knew about it, whether that's, I'm pretty sure I can read. I think I would have noticed. Perhaps I was not noticed, or our neighbors, the neighbors in our area were not noticed, because it doesn't, they weren't rezoning our property, but it still does directly affect me negatively. I'm sorry, I'm super nervous. I'm not good at speaking in public. Additionally, I have to reiterate that the traffic in that area is awful already. There are times of the day when I cannot make a left turn into the traffic, for instance, headed to Solvang out of my home when the high school lets out. It's difficult to make a right turn to get my child to elementary school in the morning when the traffic is going towards the high school. Additional ingress and ingress from this area between Refugio and Solvang would only increase that bottleneck. And also, the reason for rezoning no longer exists, so I don't believe that these particular parcels are appropriate or should remain on the plan for rezoning. And to some, there's only negative impacts that we can see, and it doesn't provide any beneficial solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Emerson, followed by Willie Chamberlain. Just go ahead and give them to the staff. We'll be fine. Thank you.
Nancy Emerson, resident of Solvang. Although Solvang is excluded from the plan area, we will be affected by decisions made about this plan. I have studied the draft plan, the EIR, and the staff report, and attended the May 4 hearing. From that study, I see the following factors at work, and I'm particularly concerned about constraints on water resources. The plan does not focus much on full theoretical buildout allowed under zoning, 47 years. Yet, even examining the first 20 years of the future, the following constraints exist. One, Class 1 environmental impacts on water, wastewater, and biological resources, and partially unknown air quality impacts. Two, increasing traffic congestion on Highway 246 with few feasible mitigations. Three, unknown impacts of future tourism activities. Four, unknown impacts of development on land removed from county planning process if Chumash fee-to-trust applications are approved, plus their possible claim to additional water rights. Five, unknown impacts of development outside the plan area in the valley. Six, unknown impacts from global climate change and southwest drought predictions. Given this information, what decisions do we need to make about this plan? The planning staff has done an enormous amount of work, including their thoughtful responses to the EIR comment letters and an easy-to-navigate website. But for me, given the need to look beyond 20 years of the plan because of the water issues, I still have information gaps. Could the staff please provide the following information at a future hearing? Question one was answered. Thank you. How would, two, how would increasing secondary units and implementing mixed-use development within the draft plan affect not only 20-year buildout, but theoretical buildout? Three, is there some way to visually understand the impact of 20-year and theoretical buildout of two-story commercial development on the townships? How does one analyze the multiple problems, uses of commercial, wastewater, parking facing Los Lejos? Four, how many parcels in the plan area are under the Williamson Act? How many have applied for removal? How many additional parcels outside the plan area in the San Inez Valley are under the Williamson Act, and how many have applied for removal? Five, using the draft plan, how many acre-feet per year of water would be needed for new development under 20-year buildout and full theoretical buildout? More questions on water, which are listed. In closing, may I suggest that you and the audience review the following information: one, the water resource sections in the plan and the EIR; and two, the following letters and planning responses, Letter 1 and Letter 38 in the comments. Then, you will understand why I began by saying I am very concerned about both the 20-year and the longer-term implications of water resource constraints.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chamberlain, followed by Chip Wilbrandt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Willie Chamberlain from Los Lejos, and I'm here today to mostly address agricultural issues. And I'll just say upfront, I really endorse And I'll just say upfront, I really endorse the comments coming from the Agricultural Advisory Committee. I was not there for their hearing, but I think they did a tremendous job looking at, at the output. I go back a little bit further than Richard Crutchfield does. He thinks he's at the head of this planning. He's a long ways from the head of the planning, and I probably didn't get to the head. But in the mid-'60s, zoning came basically to the San Ynez Valley, at least to the agricultural areas. A lot of the floor of the valley was, was zoned in one acre, five acre, 10 acre, and the outlining areas, most of them were zoned in 20-acre parcels, or 20-acre zoning, to allow 20-acre parcels. We realized, some of us in the early '70s that were on the General Plan Advisory Committee, this was going to really be a gigantic change to the valley. So, we studied and looked at possible downzoning. And I will say, by the time we got there, what you see up here in Oak Trail Ranch, Woodstock Ranch, you're going to see to these 20-acre and 10-acre parcels existed by 1975. We set about a process going through the General Plan Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, several, several hearings, and to the Board of Supervisors, several hearings. Came in with the plan that you see today, and one of the reasons that helped us get there too was because of the entrance requirements into the, into the Williamson Act. For those that are non-prime, it took a downzoning to 100. It was a voluntary process. We painstakingly looked at all these parcels in the middle of the valley. We put fives where there were ones. We put tens or twenties where there were fives and, and so forth. And then we took, and we circled the, what became A1s, no greater than A120, and that's where the inter-rural boundary line goes. And I will submit to you, where I'm showing you the Woodstock, the Oak Trails, they are within the inter-rural boundary line, even though Mr. Johnson's map showed that they are outside. I, I request that you make no change to that inter-rural boundary line, that you leave everything outside zoned as the A2 as it is, and you leave everything inside zoned as, as the A1 as it is, with some minor exceptions that are A2. And that you move the planning boundary for the, for the community plan to the existing inter-rural boundary line. I will tell you, there is a big difference between general plan and comprehensive plan that we are all in, and a community plan. The community plan is for urban planning, period. It is not for the outlying agricultural areas. We wish to continue to be planned, absolutely, but under the comprehensive general plan, not under the community plan. So, I, I really endorse the AAC's recommendations. Now, I have two very quick things I'd like to talk to you about. One, Los Levis, the urban boundary line in the new plan says, "Bring the urban boundary line of Los Levis back to Highway 154." Hogwash! Look what's out there. One block is part of the old Los Levis subdivision that has small lots. If you take that north street, which is one block north of, of Highway 154, extend it to the east over to Crowell de Quatie, that's what belongs in the urban boundary line, and it should stay there. If you call it rural ranchettes or rural anything, the neighbors are going to want to get the same type of treatment. Also, let me point out to you, this, this parcel right there, 300 acres that's in the Williamson Act, should, should go outside and be in the, that, that line should move down here where it currently is. And there's an 80-acre parcel there that is 20-acre zoned. It's the only 80 acres out of 8,500 acres that my family owns up through here that is not under Williamson Act contract. I submit to you that is, that is right adjacent to five or six homes that are on one-to-three-acre parcels. So, it would be very natural to have four 20-acre parcels right up that piece of road. So, if you take a look at it physically on the land, it makes sense. If you go to the map, maybe it doesn't make any sense. But I really request that you leave the inter-rural boundary line exactly where it is, and you make the planned boundary lines co-terminis with it. The, and I'll, I'll finish, but the planned boundary line was established where it is so that you, as the planning commission, could look at an area to see whether the inter-rural boundary line needed to be changed. And I think Bob Fields will substantiate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chip Wilbrandt, followed by Mark Oliver.
Derek, could you bring up the heritage overlay site? Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'm sure I'm going to be back a couple of more times because we represent three sets of owners, and so I'll try and get through these today. One of the things I would really urge you all, and we'll be contacting your, your offices, I'd urge you to go and see each of the, the sites proposed for downzoning before you take final action on this. I think Willie gave you a wonderful history of, of why we are where we are. And I would note, I, I live in, I call it living in Ballard. The post office says I live in Solvang. We actually live somewhere sort of between Ballard and San Ynez. The, the thing that actually makes the, the core of the valley, the core of the valley, are Ag 1 parcels. I live on one of those things that I didn't know was a terrible thing to live on. It's a ranchette. And I'm now learning through the current approach being taken in this plan that ranchettes are somehow bad. Ranchettes, I would, would urge you, are not bad, and in fact, they are agriculture. Agriculture is not the same as broad open space, though. And there are uses on Ag 1 parcels that are appropriate to Ag 1 parcels. There are uses that are appropriate to Ag 2 parcels. And as you heard from staff, there are actually a lot of uses that you can make of an Ag 2 parcel that you can't have on an Ag 1 parcel. Your environmental document did not analyze those extra potential impacts from the use of Ag 2 parcels. And I think that's an important thing for you to understand. I think that, that perhaps, rather than having to understand it in significant depth, though, I would urge you to just take the recommendation of the Ag Advisory Committee, which does very much understand the differences between Ag 1 and Ag 2, and has urged you to leave the areas outside of the current, and, and the term, I think, has been used, urban boundary. Again, I'm amazed at the idea that Ag 1 parcels zoned up to sizes of 40 acres are considered urban here. They're really not. And the, the statistics you heard comparing to other community plans, I think you've got to take those with a huge grain of salt because what is, is an urban or rural use in Montecito has, has no relationship to what is an urban or rural use in San Ynez. I do want to quickly go through the, the couple of parcels that I'm representing. And as Willie said, this process goes back at least to the 1960s. And a couple of these owners, I would say, are being punished for not developing their properties between the 1960s and now. One is the Mills family, and they're the upper part of this red block here. They own 120 acres. They've owned the 120 acres for about 40 years. When they bought the property, it was zoned 1E1. It's at the base of Janon Acres. The other side of Janon Acres, though, you actually can't find it unless you're actually in Janon Acres at the end of Janon Way. They participated in the community plan process in 1981, agreed that it ought to be downzoned to Ag 15. Went from 1E1 to Ag 15. That was a compromise at that time. Going to Ag 240 on that property is absolutely not a compromise. I note that the property below that, which is also in red here, is already fully subdivided into 20-acre parcels. So, they're surrounded on, on this side by 1E1. There's some five-acre zoning in here, and 20 acres to the south. That, that is classic spot zoning. The other property that I'm here representing is the Shepherd family. There's it. It looks odd, and I think they got included in, in this downzone proposal because when you look at a big map, it looks odd. When they bought that property, again, 40-ish years ago, it was zoned for five-acre parcels. There was a compromise, which is they own 320 acres. The rest of their property was down, downzoned to Ag 2100, and they've had Williamson Act benefits. They use it for Ag 2 purposes. The 80 acres out there in the middle has soils that are better for vegetable and, and truck crop-type production. They have eight children. They carved out an 80-acre area. The county agreed to zone it Ag 110 so that each of their eight children could have a 10-acre parcel. That's part of their long-term family planning. They haven't subdivided it, and so now the proposal is, take away that compromise that they already agreed to and downzone them again. Not to, as you heard the other day, just small downzones, you know, like an Ag 110 to an Ag 120. The proposal is go from Ag 110 to Ag 2100. I think, again, you need to see each of these parcels. There was a, there was a concept for the heritage overlay. The concept, I think, was appropriate. There are areas, and it's mainly this property right here. There are areas in the valley that are highly visible, that need additional scrutiny. In order to have a study, though, what I was told by then-supervisor Firestone, they were going to include these other properties. There was going to be a detailed study of whether the other properties actually fit the standards for heritage site overlay. That study didn't happen. You just got the very high-level, I'll call it, urban planning concept that bigger downzoning is always better. I'm going to just quickly close.
Thank you. Your time's up. I've got to be fair to everybody.
May I just quickly say, all of the owners in, in this area here, Janon Acres, Rancho Marcelino, we represent them. They're opposed to Site C and D. And if you think that, that the, the potential subdivision there is going to be accessed from their private roadways, just to clarify, they have no access from the private roadway, so leave it at 154.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver, followed by Barbara Meyer.
Good morning. My name is Mark Oliver. I'm president of the San Ynez Valley Alliance, and I'm speaking on behalf of that organization. And we have provided you with a letter, which you have now. I think the staff has that. First of all, I want to thank you for holding a meeting in the valley. This community has demonstrated its very active interest in this kind of future. It has, and it's appropriate that the hearing take place here today. Development of the plan has been years in the making. It began with citizens of the valley, the conservatives, progressives, conservationists, agriculturalists, citizens of all persuasions, came together in over 5,000 cumulative hours to develop the Valley Blueprint. The goals enshrined in that document were designed to provide guidance for the development of the Valley Community Plan. Let me reemphasize something here. Citizens of all political persuasions came together and created this document. And this plan does reflect those goals, and it reflects the input of Valley citizens under two different supervisors, the GPAC and the VPAC. That being said, be aware, and you've heard it today, there are a lot of voices calling at this late date for consideration of their own special interests. This is not the time for that. Enough is enough. Everyone has had their say, and it's time to recommend the adoption of a plan that'll help us meet the goals of the Valley Blueprint, to maintain the rural character of this valley and preserve agriculture. To that end, staff recommends the Downzone, Downzone Alternative, which has also been identified as the environmentally superior alternative because it results in fewer impacts to the community. Alternative 2 incorporates the recommendations of the GPAC. The certain parcels, many of them totally undeveloped, have increased minimum parcel sizes, thereby reducing future development and traffic. This alternative adjusts the urban, inter-rural, and rural boundaries to contain sprawl and discourage fragmentation of agricultural resources. The Valley Alliance and I urge you to support the Downzone Alternative Number 2. To do otherwise would be to, to set a dangerous precedent, in our opinion. In fact, you could say, as the valley goes, so too could go many of the areas of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Urban, followed by Jordan Moe.
Yeah, Commissioner Blanchard. I hope that, I don't know if this thing is on or not.
It's on.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I would really appreciate when you came up to speak if you would tell us which alternative you want, because sometimes you speak on both sides, and you say, "Well, there's good things about this. There's good things about that." And when you finish your comments, it's difficult to weigh which proposal do you like. And so, at the end of your comments, if you would say which one you like, that would help. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Urban, go ahead.
My name is Rob Urban, and you've made it very easy because I don't like either one of these proposals. As it relates to...
That's good.
Yes, let's, let's be crystal on the out front. My concern is the rezoning specifically of the high-density, very-low-income properties on a artery, main artery to our valley, specifically A, B, C, and D. I happen to live right near proposed rezoned properties, C and D. I'm concerned about this for several reasons. One, it is absolutely not consistent with the zoning in the surrounding community. These are all estate-zoned properties for, in three directions for a mile or more. They're one acre or higher. In one direction, it's quarter to a half mile, all high, one-acre, single-family residences. I don't know in any alternate universe where 12 acres, 12 units on an acre resembles one residence on an acre. I mean, it just makes absolutely no sense to me. The, the other concern I have is for the potential people, these very low-income people that would be subjected to living in these zoning, rezoned areas. If you argue that they're close to shopping and grocery stores, I can tell you, I can hardly afford to go shop at El Rancho Market. It is a specialty market. It is a great market, and I love going there for certain things. But it's not the place I do my family daily shopping, or my wife does our family daily shopping. To, to have a low-income person, have that shopping center be the only one that's within reasonable distance, again, we're in an alternate universe on that subject. The secondary item is if the plan is to have these, especially C and D, be occupied by families of low-income families, yes, there are schools in the local area. Those are high schools and a very expensive, private grammar school. Once again, subjecting these people to not convenient, affordable grocery shopping, and then having them have to, I don't know how their, their children are going to get to school, at, at, at what grammar school, even within biking distance, there isn't one. So, that's a problem that I think needs to be heavily rethought. The couple more items. It will absolutely, co-locating this volume of dense rezoned units per acre will absolutely dramatically affect the, the local property values. And last but not least, oh, I think that's...
Thank you, Mr. Urban.
Those are my key points.
Thank you. Jordan Moe, followed by Greg Hubbard.
And Mr. Moe, before you start, please note that although I am trying to hold the time limit to three minutes, doesn't prevent anybody from writing the commissioner letter. And as said in previous meetings, a well-written letter actually sometimes has much greater effect than committing a speech, because with the letter in writing, we have the opportunity to make comments on it, ask staff questions about it, and so forth. So, please don't think that I'm not interested in what you have to say or what you're thinking is, it's just that we need to get through this process. But if you have more to say, it takes more than three minutes, please write us a letter. Explain your thoughts. Thank you.
My name's Jordan Moe.
Jordan Moe.
I live on Quail Valley Road, about half a mile from the proposed low-income housing. And this is the first I've heard of it, having lived there five years. And I am not sure if I didn't get the mail or if you're noticing it's depending on the news press, because that does not cover the valley very well in my own experience. What I'm speaking to is the traffic, as other people have. I try not to go into town on, after 3:00 in the afternoon because it, the traffic is likely is not backed up to Coyle Valley from Alamo Pantato and then on into Solvang. It's really quite a serious problem for us who live there to try to do our business. You can't turn left, of course, because they're, so you can't go to El Rancho. You really have to consider traffic when you make your plans for the day. And I think exacerbating it with further housing in that area would be counterproductive to the kind of valley life we all live out here, prefer. Thanks.
Thank you. Greg Hubbard, followed by Christina Urban.
Thank you. My name's Greg Hubbard, and I'm here representing my family on Quail Valley Road. I'm very, very upset by the proposal in front of us on the board, A, B, C, and D. Why this density and why here? Why are we trying to solve the region's affordable housing problems within the confines of four acres? Why are we creating an economic and social ghetto? Genuinely affordable housing is of vital importance to both the economic health of our community and the dignity of the families for whom it is intended, but not ghettoizing them. Every city in America that has created such densely... not ghettoizing them. Every city in America that has created such densely packed housing has regretted it. Whether you look at Pasadena, with their relatively small units that they're selling off, or you look at St. Louis, with the demolition of Pruitt-Igoe, block after block of public housing of one sort or another. And why are we treating the people who need affordable housing like some sort of contagion that needs to be boxed up in little corner somewhere? Why are we creating this, which will become a maintenance problem? If it doesn't become slum housing, it can certainly also shift to high income. Those are the two dangers that most affordable housing fall into. Either the economic and social ghetto, or down the road, five, 10 years, it becomes well-to-do housing, and has nothing to do with its original intended purpose. The traffic on that street, as you've heard from everybody here, is terrible. Why are we adding to it? Who will guarantee that, after all is said and done, that we don't have another traffic light, which will create further traffic problems at this intersection? How are we going to dump forty families in there, fifty families in there, morning and evening, where they have to go out not only to work, but in addition, they're going out for personal errands, shopping, and the like? What is this going to do to our property values? That may sound elitist, but we have our retirement invested in this property. This is, this is our biggest investment in our lives. Dumping low-income housing next to us is not going to help our property values. It's not something that I want in my immediate neighborhood. And that may sound like NIMBY, but I'm sorry. Concentrating all of this on one piece of property is, for me, from my perspective, of better than forty years in small-town, community, and neighborhood preservation, an idiotic idea. And there is no way to mitigate it. In addition to which, it was brought up that there are some water problems in Janon Acres. Why are we then sticking another fifty residences into Janon Acres? Perhaps I misunderstood the reference, but I see that as being a serious danger. And finally, why is this meeting scheduled for nine o'clock in the morning on a workday morning? That makes it very hard. I bet this room would be full of a great many people who cannot attend, simply because of the hour at which it's held.
Thank you. Christine Urban, followed by Ron Kay.
I'm Christine Urban, and I'm a resident of Siena Way, D. And you guys, and you probably have me to thank for a lot of what's going on here. Because I'm the one that saw the article in the newspaper, and that's how I found out what was going to be happening right outside my front door. And here's a little map that we did. We got together, I started talking to neighbors, nobody knew about it. We got together, started passing out some flyers, and San Inez Oaks, Janet, and also the flyer... Can you speak into the mic, please? No, sorry. Speaking to the mic, please. Oh, speaking to the mic. I'm kind of loud, but anyway. So, this map here represents just a focused area that we hit, and we went and surveyed. The pink represents the people that signed our little survey, that said they are in opposition to C and D. The white don't think for a minute those are people that were in favor of it. Those were people that were not home. And we actually, I think among all of us, got four people that did not want to sign the opposition, and that was because they didn't feel like they had enough information, not because they didn't like the idea. As far as the traffic, that is a huge issue for me. You've heard that. But I don't know who does the traffic planning, but if they had been in our area at eight o'clock in the morning, when everyone's driving to the high school, or bringing kids to the high school, or to the charter school, they would have graded that an F, I'm sure, because it is unbelievable. It's a completely different world at that time of day, and I'm one of the people that has to try and get out in the morning. Sometimes I sit there for five minutes. Our kids kind of joke about, "Mom, go! Don't go! No, go! I think you can make it," you know, kind of thing. And I've always said, it's a horrible accident waiting to happen. You've got high school drivers that are inexperienced, and you're proposing to add that many more families in that are also going to have to be going to work, going to school. It's just a really poor choice for an area. It's not about not wanting that type of people. Again, my husband spoke. I do agree that it's not centrally located enough to grade schools that can be walked to, or ridden, have a bike ridden to, or a grocery store that's affordable to shop at. And I did want to say that I totally get it, that this is not easy for you guys. I'm the mom of five, and it's very hard to please everybody all the time. I want you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Kay, followed by Donald Malone.
My name is Donald J. Malone. I'm a forty-three-year resident of a home in Janon that is seventy-five feet away from affordable housing sites C. I'm opposed to C and D, whatever alternative you're talking about. I have three degrees in engineering and economics, and three professional licenses. Additionally, I served as the economics consultant for the San Inez Valley Agricultural rezoning back in nineteen seventy-five. I feel the San Inez Valley Plan is reasonably clear and mostly accurate. However, when it comes to fulfilling some of its own goals, the extensive painstaking work sometimes falls short. For example, the staff report material in the front states that the pillar goal of the San Inez Valley Plan is, maintain the San Inez Valley's rural character and agricultural tradition, while accommodating some well-planned growth within the township boundaries that is compatible with surrounding uses. There is a large land use discontinuity between Janon Acres and affordable houses, housing sites C and D. These sites are hardly compatible with Janon or its neighbors. The proposed dwelling units per acre figure for these sites is twelve times larger than in the adjacent areas. Crowding and income level differences would automatically drive new residents' behavior, frame their tastes related to property use, noise level, traffic level, nighttime light pollution, government service, and other activities. Sometimes there is currently a neighborhood household noise problem at night. I don't know the average or the peak decibel level, but I do know that is sometimes it's just about the maximum tolerable during the sleeping periods. I hate to think of the potential ambience reduction with forty-eight new neighbors at Site C, and another fifty at Site D. All noises, pollution sources, emergency vehicles, and auto accidents would be similarly affected. These issues rarely appear in the text. They are potential qualitative decrements to our quality of life, and not directly amenable to analysis. We have come to the point that only the appointed planning commissioners and the elected county supervisors have the opportunity to exercise common sense and informed judgment to rectify the shortcomings of an extremely quantitative process. I invite you, the planning commissioners and the county supervisors, to come and look at Janon Acres and our similarly zoned sister communities, north and east of us, San Inez Oaks and Siena Way. I'll drive you around for about half an hour to see some beautiful homes in quiet, well-kept neighborhoods that do not at all resemble the functional Valley Plan photos taken from State Highway two forty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Ron Kane, followed by Barbara Young. Is Ron, Ron's not here? Okay. Barbara Young, followed by Jean, Judy Stauffer.
I'd like to introduce myself as a member of the County Riding and Hiking Trails Committee. We're an advisory committee. I represent the third district with several other people. A motion was passed at our meeting on Monday, this past Monday, that we regretted the loss of off-road trail possibilities that has occurred in the current version of the community plan. And we wish to encourage you to put back in the more recent plan, the trails that had been proposed in the two thousand and six plan, the off-road trails. Although it will always be difficult to secure trail easements through private property, without proper planning, it isn't even a possibility. The whole community benefits from recreational facilities as simple as safe places to walk, close to urban areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Stauffer, followed by Carol Herrera.
Good morning. My name is Judy Stauffer, and I live in the unincorporated area outside of Buellton. I've lived in the valley for twenty years. I have been a participant of the two-year San Inez Blueprint process, and a member of Buellton as our town steering committee. Today, perhaps more than at any previous time, our valley's future is under assault. The rural agrarian harmony of our valley is being threatened. Exploitive interests are seeking to prey upon these difficult economic times, and our natural resources are being viewed purely for short-term profit, regardless of the long-term cost. For these reasons, I urge you to adopt Alternative Two of the San Inez Plan, the Downzone Alternative, which will best protect and preserve the rural character of our valley and its agricultural lands, maintain the gateways of our valley, and the corridors that separate each of our towns, and help prevent sprawling developments that lead to urban congestion. Those of us who were involved in Buellton as our town found that these same sound planning principles were held in high esteem by the residents of Buellton, a population that is viewed perhaps as the most accommodating of growth within our valley communities. However, last fall, sixty-nine percent of Buellton voters approved our citizens' proposed urban growth boundary initiative, despite a confusing competitive measure on the ballot, demonstrating an overwhelming support for this very same principles that are expressed in Alternative Two. Why? Because Buellton residents recognized that by protecting the surrounding agricultural lands, they were preserving the rural character of their community. Presently, the winds of opposition can be felt across the face of our valley. I speak not only for myself, but also supporters of Buellton as our town, when I urge you not to succumb to short-term solutions to meet challenges that are complex and interconnected. We must all rededicate ourselves to both protect and preserve our present for future generations, and this challenge is certainly worth all of our very best efforts. And since I have a very few moments, I want to make a statement, because I've heard a number of people talk about not wanting density in their area. And within Buellton, we've been talking about the state housing mandate numbers. And one of the things that I urge at the county level is for that conversation to be brought to the state, because growth is not inevitable. It's a choice. And how we deal with people moving into our valley, creating more dense issues and things like that, that is something that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Herrera, followed by Elizabeth Brew.
Commissioner Blau, commissioners, my name is Carol Herrera, and I represent Women's Environmental Watch, also known as WE Watch. WE Watch is a community organization that was started in nineteen ninety-two. Our members are a cross-section of valley residents who place an emphasis on, on environmental concerns. I, I gave you a packet of four or five pages where we reference some of our concerns. We are not taking a position in terms of staff's work. We are bringing to your attention some of the questions and concerns that were made, and what we perceive as lack of protections. I don't think this is working very well. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, the plan represents a series of choices to be made by yourselves and our elected representatives. We have devoted untold hours to our review of this plan, the DER, the EIR, and the staff comments, with the goal of arriving at a consensus, a consensus opinion regarding the San Inez Valley Plan. We seek to offer informed comment, not to dictate decisions. We have certain areas that we are concerned with, and I will delineate them, but you have them fully explained in your written, in our written comment to you. The first would be the protection of the rural character of the valley through gateways and corridors. We're bringing to your attention the need of adding a special land area designation referred to in the EIR as gateways. Those of particular concern to WE Watch are the triangle, that parcel at the intersection of Highways two forty-six and one fifty-four. Also, the relocation of the urban boundary lines in Los Olivos at one fifty-four, and Figueroa Mountain Road to the south of Highway one fifty-four. This would ensure that Los Olivos does not expand and straddle the highway. With regard to corridors, maintaining the townships of Los Olivos, Ballard, and San Inez as unique enclaves should be stressed. Our second important point that we wanted to make to you was the protection of the dark night sky. WE Watch is appreciative of the support given in the plan, in the, in the EIR, to the proposed outdoor lighting ordinance. The parcels located in the northeast corner of the plan area, east of Brinkerhoff Road, need to be treated as areas of special interest because of their present proximity to the UCSB Cedric Reserve and their new observatory.
Great, thank you. And just a comment. It's not a problem this time, but normally when we receive more than a one-page letter the day of the hearing, we need to vote that into the, to the record. This case, I don't think it's necessary, because we're not going to make a decision for a couple of months. But for those of you, especially representing large groups, if you're going to give the chair, or give the commissioner a letter, it needs to be two days before the meeting, I believe is the tight deadline. Thank you very much. Elizabeth Brew. Did I do your name right?
Elizabeth Breen.
Breen.
I'm an eighteen-year resident of the valley, own property at twenty-three ninety-nine Janon Place, and also I'm a business owner and own a mixed-use property in solving. I'm here to comment on the issue of the overlay for affordable housing, as already has been commented on. I want to add a couple of items quickly about traffic that I don't think have been addressed. I live at Janon Place, which is a very small, little dead-end road at the end of Janon. There are seven homes past my home on that road. Three of the seven families have been in bad accidents at the intersection of Janon and two forty-six. Additionally, at one time, a couple of years ago, I spoke with the CHP personnel, who told me that almost daily, there's an accident between Rafufio and Alamo Pantato on two forty-six. I personally have had four or five very close calls that involved me looking in my rearview mirror and maneuvering my Escalade out of the way of somebody behind me who was about to rear-end me. The other issue that I don't think has been mentioned about traffic is that I believe the city has already approved a development off of High Meadow. They're trying to figure out how to mitigate that traffic. Lots of luck. I have no idea how they're going to do that. But we're already talking about adding, I think, another twelve homes up off of High Meadow. The, the traffic can't even be described unless you live with it on a daily basis. And the last comment I wanted to make is that eighteen years ago, we came here from Ramona. Ramona, at that time, was a small town about forty-five miles outside of San Diego. We left Ramona because of issues of density and improper planning. I understand that there were burdens that said we have to have affordable housing. My understanding is the state burdens have been met, and the burdens that we are going to create, as CJ put it much more eloquently than I can, are enormous. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Gersi, followed by Sharon Meritz.
I'm, my name's Ann Gersi, and I'm a property owner. I own twenty-six acres, very near the overlay of the Highway two forty-six for the affordable housing. I'm against the affordable housing for several reasons, not the least of which is I think it stigmatizes the people who would be living there. And I think there are much better ways to do it. I'd like to point out, most importantly, that this plan that you're looking at right now has been going on for quite some time. And during that time, and most recently, market conditions have changed dramatically at the time it was created. There was no place for affordable housing. You couldn't find any. Now, there is a plethora of affordable housing that exists anywhere from Santa Maria to Lompoc. Lots of houses in foreclosure, lots of mortgages held by governments that could be taken over. People could be in single-family homes in areas that they could afford to, to shop, send their children to school, not be stigmatized, have housing that has a shot, a chance at appreciation, as opposed to, as you say, cubicle box housing... box housing, which houses people and typically and traditionally has never appreciated in value and has in fact depreciated the values of the houses that surround it and are adjacent to it. It would seem to me now that people should look, where are the foreclosures? If you took the same budgets that were going to be used to construct new places with very high densities, took the same money, you could buy many, many thousands probably of real, single-family houses that would then restore the neighborhoods in those areas because people would be living there. They would create neighborhoods where people could actually function, enjoy the environment, have their kids in proper schools, have their kids in proper, have their own proper shopping surroundings, and be in areas that already have density. These are one-acre parcels to twenty-six acre parcels to forty-acre parcels to the Mills Properties, which is what, one hundred and forty acres? The density, as everybody says, just to reiterate, the traffic is ridiculous on the 246 and dangerous and nasty in terms of air quality. The other thing I'd like to point out is that I would argue that notification has not been good to those of us who live in that area because this is the first, any of us have heard of this project in the last couple of weeks. I certainly read my mail and get emails. In fact, I submitted my email last Tuesday when I was in Santa Maria, did not hear anything or receive an email regarding this meeting today. I would also agree that a nine a.m. timeframe and not an evening timeframe is by nature biased toward the plan or the people who have proposed the plan and does not respect the time and the contribution of the immediate community that will be affected by this.
Thank you. Sharon Merritt, followed by Bruce Steele.
Hi, my name's Sharon Merritt. I have a two-hundred-plus acre farm on Santa Rosa Road, which is the last property to the west included in the plan. I want to urge you to take into consideration the advisory committee's recommendation. That's why you have the advisory committee. There are representatives in ag. I don't believe that the large agricultural properties that are inactive ag belong in this plan. We are covered by the community plan. Most of us are Williamson. We're covered by the Williamson Act, and that's enough. Farmers that I've spoken with, liberal and conservative, just want to be left alone and farm. One of the real concerns that I have about being within the plan is, a couple of years ago when Buellton did their sphere of influence thing, and we know that the purpose of a sphere of influence is to identify land that you could subsequently annex. And they removed all the properties south of the river that they would not consider for annexation. Nevertheless, there is, you know, you folks are here now. Ten years from now, properties that are in the plan might be seen by LAFCO as available for urbanization because they were in the community plan. And I think the large ag properties should not be available for annexation, should not be available for sphere of influence changes. The other issue, again, it's an ag issue that I would like to bring up, is I would like a firm commitment, and I think it's in there, but I want you guys to really firmly commit to not put recreational facilities on floodplains, not put recreational facilities on ag land, not put recreational facilities on prime ag. I've spoken with Derek. The county has standards for parks. It does not actually have standards for active rec. And when you have lots of kids who want to play soccer or baseball or whatever, there are going to be people who are going to look for cheap land to put those fields on. Ag land is cheaper, and then the surrounding properties become invaded. So those are my two issues. And I don't know if Bruce is here. If Bruce isn't here, oh, Bruce is here. Okay, then he can speak for himself. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Steele, followed by Donna Will.
Hello, Bruce Steele, farmer. I'm the westernmost lot in the heritage oversight. I guess I'm a lucky guy. I'm in the heritage overlay. I'm in the flood control zone. I got five listed species on my property. I'm in the interrural. And I think of all the people who went through the process, I was probably the only one who supported heritage site who was actually going to be affected by it. And at the time, it was proposed that a heritage overlay was going to somehow get us out of the downzoning. Those were alternatives. One was downzoning, the other was heritage overlay. And I don't really care what you do to me as far as telling me I can't develop, because I'm not going to develop anyhow. I'm zoned ag 110. I own thirty acres, but it's all in the flood zone. It's preposterous. I don't have the hundreds of thousands of dollars to fight my way through whatever it would take to develop my property, and I don't intend to. I'm a dirt farmer. I couldn't afford it if I wanted to. But my problem is, when I went through this process, I complained about the fact that in the flood zone, we have a lot of problem with people who want to put motocross on their property. That doesn't seem to matter. I complained. It's not in this process. My property, I have to barricade off from people with four-wheel drives dumping trash on my property. Right now, you can ride your horses across the back of my property. I don't care. That doesn't bother me. But when you want to root around at all hours of the night, when I call up the sheriff and complain, when I call up about people shooting their guns at midnight and they tell me that that's not a problem and they're not going to come deal with it, those are real issues to me. My farm is, I sell all my produce here in the valley. I have a little farm stand. All my produce, few tons of heirloom tomatoes, few tons of corn, all those things stay here in the valley. I grow, I make my own biodiesel. I'm trying to do everything I can to do what you people are supposed to be preserving. But the bottom line is, that river is the most important thing in this valley, and everything you're talking about is a visual. I don't, you know, for me as a farmer, it's not whether my farm looks beautiful. Hopefully, people appreciate it. That isn't the point. It's how well we manage that river, how well we manage our water resources, how well we actually do at preserving those little animals that are endangered that live in that river. Those things matter to me. I try and do my damnedest to do something about it, but seriously, I'm not getting much help. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Donna Will, followed by John Everett.
Hi. I support the valley blueprint right off. As a resident of solving for seventeen years, I'd like to highlight my concern for traffic in the valley. In my support for the downsizing alternative, I know that the rural character of the valley will be protected. I dislike traffic but don't wish to see overwidening roads and highways. With downsizing, we have managed growth and protection of agricultural lands and less traffic.
Thank you. John Everett, I hope I'm saying that correct. Everett, perhaps. I'm sure he'll correct me when he gets up there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You did get it right on the second try. And I wanted to say I do appreciate the morning meeting. Perhaps I'm a veteran of too many meetings that start at six and end at your midnight. So I was a participant in the blueprint process. I also served on the San Inez Valley GPAC for nearly ten years, including the period from 2001 to 2003 when we worked with county staff to draft that first of many drafts to update the 1981 community plan. I've limited my comments to three areas of concern. In the Parks, Recreation, and Trails section of the plan, the current PRT map no longer shows the proposed River Trail and the proposed River Trail Links. In the SYV Community Plan Environmental Review Draft, the one that was released in May of 2006, these off-road trails were included in the PRT plan, and they're described in that document's Table 18. Somehow, between May 2006 and September 2006, when the current plan was released, these trails were quietly wiped off the map. The idea of a hiking and equestrian trail between Buellton Highway 154 is regarded as a nightmare by a few, but for the vast majority of valley residents, I think this would be welcomed as a wonderful recreational opportunity. We live in a river valley, and there's essentially no public access to the river's beautiful riparian corridor unless one drives to Kachuma Lake, which is hardly a river or farther upstream to U.S. Forest Service lands. These proposed river trails should be restored to the updated plan. In the Biological Resources section, the valley's plant communities are described and their distribution is shown in Appendix F. These plant communities were mapped for the urban and interrural areas of the plan in 2002. Many areas that were mapped are considered environmentally sensitive habitat areas or known as ESHs. In the SYV Community Plan Environmental Draft, again, the May 2006 version, the ESHs are clearly there, and they serve as an informational baseline for developing policies and standards of development. But in the current plan, all references to the ESHs have been expunged from the Biological Resources section. The updated plan should restore these vital ESH maps and adopt the ESH designation that provides guidance in identifying these imperiled habitats so that the inevitable impacts of future development can be minimized. With regard to development standard bio SYV 4.1, which is on page 175 of the current document, the twenty-five-foot minimum setback for new development along natural stream corridors in urban and interrural community area parts of the plan should be increased to fifty feet. Twenty-five feet is simply inadequate and it's not consistent with other community plans. Our riparian corridors along the streams are probably the most important biological resource in the entire plan area and deserve this larger setback from development threats. These areas shelter a diverse array of fauna, from aquatic to avian species. They serve as critical wildlife pathways, and they sustain several plant communities that are increasingly uncommon.
Thank you.
Finally, because you asked, I have twenty, just want to say, I strongly support the downzone alternative. If the residents of the valley want the updated community plan to embrace the vision of the valley blueprint, then this alternative is simply our best option. Thank you.
Thank you. Norma Williams, followed by Chris Dahlstrom.
To reference to the Buellton area, my family and I have owned the old Buell Ranch, forty acres, or twelve hundred acres for the last forty-seven years. I don't know if it's on the map.
You need to speak a little closer to the microphone.
Yes. We have the eleven hundred acres that surrounds Buellton and the north and west of Buellton. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I've sent letters in the past that we're not in the ag preserve. We're not in the Williamson Act, and they need to kind of take that into consideration for your future zoning. We are under pressure from the city, even though outsiders have come in and tried to stop it. But, you know, people in the city continue to pressure the farmers when you surround them at close proximity. So I think that, in any case, you need to correct the issue that it's not in ag preserve, and we hope that we can live comfortably with the people in the surrounding city as we continue our agriculture process. However, you need to take into consideration that as the pressures build over the next ten to twenty years, that things will have to happen, that we won't want to be constantly under pressure as ag culture preserve, which we're not in. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Dahlstrom, followed by Lori Timura.
My name is Harlan Mercardi. Chris asked me to inform you. He had to leave, and he will be submitting the Water District's comments by mail, if that's permissible.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Lori Timura. I'm a land use consultant from Santa Maria and have had an opportunity to review the community plan, and I really appreciate the comments from the valley members. It really has hit on a number of issues, so I'll go quickly through the points that I'd like to raise. I believe Mr. Jackson's comment in regards to making sure that the community plan follows properties line its paramount to the success of a community plan. To split properties is almost devastating to a landowner. So I think there should be a reconsideration of the perimeter of the community plan solely on that point. I'm really concerned about the D overlay being expanded to outlying active agricultural areas, even the heritage sites. The design overlay means that a landowner will be going to the Board of Architectural Review for buildings such as barns, sheds, stables. It does not have an exemption for any of those accessory structures. And I really think that that needs to be looked at very carefully because you don't want to subject an agriculturalist to that process. The urban designation for high fire, I think you might need to look at that again just based on what is considered urban designated land versus high-fire hazard area. You don't want to suggest the urban core to some of the standards for the high-fire area. There is a policy called San Inez Valley 2.3 in the affordable housing area, and it's on page fourteen in the original staff report. And this is one that we're struggling with throughout the county right now, is that houses that are more than fifty years old are now considered historic structures and have to have a report written if they're going to be removed. That is basically every tract house that was built before 1960 and will probably continue to become an escalating problem as this fifty-year standard continues as we hit 2010, 2020. So every tract house that would have to be remodeled would now need to have a historic survey. I think that standard needs to be changed. I think you should set a baseline of like, houses before 1940 need to have a survey or some standard but not have it a fifty-year moving target. Let's see, the development standards and policies. I'm a veteran of the Orca Community Plan, the Los Alamos Community Plan, the original Buellton Community Plan, and some of the work in Lompoc. And there are too many development standards and too many policies in these community plans. I hope the Planning Commission will take a more severe look at how many policies and development standards there are because they are a hamstring to development and a hamstring to the community plan's success over the long term. So as you're going through these, take a look at them with a jonda's eye. Are they already standard conditions or not? And then the heritage sites, if you're going to downzone a landowner, it's patently unfair to someone who has bought a piece of property or held a piece of property for a historic period of time. And if you're going to do it, call them Transfer of Development Credit Sites. Give them something of value to what you're doing to them besides just stripping their rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Joan Hartman, followed by Doug Hertel.
Chairman Blau and members of the commission, thank you for this opportunity to address you. My name is Joan Hartman. I'm a member of the community. I live in the unincorporated area outside Buellton. I would like to say that the community plan got it right. The community wants the valley to stay the same, rural and beautiful with a strong agricultural economy. That's from the staff report, page five. If we can't stop sprawl and overdevelopment here, where agriculture and tourism are the drivers of our economy and depend on rural and beautiful, it just can't be done anywhere. We have a duty to ourselves but also to others who depend on us for food and respite and to those who are trying to maintain similar values elsewhere. I'm here today to speak against further excluding agricultural lands from the plan area. As you all know, the plan has already been shrunk by four fifths, and I don't think it should be shrunk anymore. And the question is, why would people want it shrunk? We've heard from the agricultural community, some members, that it's to protect agriculture. I would point out, the Agricultural Advisory Committee meeting minutes of March 4th, those minutes, they not only want to be outside the community plan, but they would like to be outside the proposed rural regional development plan. And the reason for that was because most members of the community don't understand agricultural issues. They went on to talk at that meeting about what they would like to be a part of, which is the agricultural element of the plan. And why is that? They unanimously passed a motion, and this is what it said. "The analysis of alternative land uses, including non-agricultural uses, should be included in the agricultural element and reflected in the policy framework of the land use element." Advocates for shrinking the boundary Advocates for shrinking the boundary yet again claim it is to protect ag, but their own motion shows it is for non-agricultural uses. The excellent staff report emphasizes the importance of protecting agricultural lands and resisting the trend of parcelization that diminishes ag viability. Please heed that warning.
Thank you. Doug Hertel. And that's the last speaker slip I have.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for being here. It's obvious everyone here in this room loves this valley and has many ways of trying to protect it and some of us have different ways, different approaches. Ours is pretty basic. I'm the president of Polo. We were in the same position as some of the folks here from Janet Acres five, six years ago and kind of brought back memories, actually. But we've got a great staff here. I've been impressed with all the work they've done. But the bottom line is, there's many of these things. The downzoning of private property, I think, is considered a taking of people's property value. And I think if you have a option of downzoning someone's private property and they are not voluntarily wanting to do that, that you mark the box, no change. And that goes for upzoning property. If the neighbors in the property owner don't want to upzone, why upzone? You can see the grief this has caused. And that all goes back to the state mandate. Polo, some years ago, filed a legal complaint against the county, which you have on file, against the state mandate and what it was doing to the communities. And the high-density housing, it's, you go back to Acorn and see what that's done to our economy. State mandate's the same logic. And so as things have changed, I think people see the wisdom of the county should fight that state mandate. The other thing is trails through ag property. It sounds wonderful. We'd all like to wander through people's property, but it's not practical for ag and it's a form of taking. Now, as far as if someone wants to have a trail go through, that's fine. If they want to have a downzone, that's fine. We personally have downzoned, when Willie downzoned our property some 20 years ago, we thought it was a great idea because it took five acres to 10 acres, made sense. In the Montanaro property, it's 3.3 houses per acre. We want to downzone it to one per five acre. Now, if I didn't want to, I would say you're taking, but we want to. So I just, when you go through this, and we had a great meeting a year ago with all the communities agreeing, no trails through the ag property, no downzoning if people are not voluntarily want it, no upzoning, and what else? There was one other thing. I asked Joanie Gray, and she was here, she said it was amazing, the consensus. So, and we will get that transcript for you because there was an amazing consensus that night of all the groups and so we'll provide that for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that was my last speaker. No other speaker slips. I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. We have a couple of things we need to do probably first. One is to set the place for our next hearing. Ms. Black, am I correct? We need to do that or not? We need to establish where we're going to have the next hearing for this, for the San Jacs Community Plan.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Before we close the meeting today, we need to establish both the place and the time and continue it to that date and place.
We have, we have one more meeting scheduled or two? I can't remember. Two more?
Pardon?
We have two more.
We have a hearing scheduled for June 3rd and then June 29th, which is a Monday. So we have two more.
June 29th, okay. Well, the chair's going to propose that we hold the next meeting if it's June 3rd in Santa Barbara and do the other one in Santa Maria. It would be the Monday meeting. I got to tell you, it's extremely difficult for both the staff and everybody else to do this kind of a hearing here. You can't imagine the extra money that we're spending in order to do this. It will be televised. We will try and make arrangements for remote testimony. I'm not sure I can do that, but pardon? I understand that. That's why we had the meeting here today. Patricia Brooks.
Thank you, Chair Blau. At our last meeting, we did discuss a possibility of an evening meeting and I'd like to maybe turn it over to Mr. Johnson. You had looked at some possible dates. I think if there's an overwhelming call for an evening meeting and if it's agreeable to staff as far as setting it up and not having it be horrendously expensive for the county, I'd like just to hear from staff. What do you think about that possibility at this point?
Commissioner, Commissioner Blau? Commissioner Blau and members of the commission, I just, we do have some dates when the facility is available. We have those dates if it's the pleasure of the commission to have hearings in the evening. Certainly, we'd be, can facilitate and make that happen. There were some dates that I briefed the board last week where this facility is available and we could certainly set up an arrangement like this, like we've done today, should the commission be inclined to have further hearings in the valley and during the evening. There are some dates open in the immediate future, in next week, in the following week on Wednesday evenings. And then again, in early June, you have, do have a June 3rd date before your next hearing and this facility is open for that evening as well if the commission's inclined to have that meeting.
That's your question?
It does. Maybe I could hear from some of the other commissioners as far as how they feel about those dates and times or if we have to go to the originally planned sites.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Valencia.
I would support the commissioner of the district. If she wanted to have the Wednesday meeting here at night, say, starting at 5:00 in the evening, that would be adequate. Want to make sure, I don't want to start at 7:30 because these things are going to last four or five hours and you can't think straight after 9:30, 10:00. Everybody will be dozing off, but 5:00 would be a good time to start. Give everybody a good three hours of staying awake and listening and bringing their arguments forth. So I would support the-
If I could make a comment? I guess my, my view of this is that I only see a couple of issues and they don't seem to be too controversial. I mean, I see the issue of the low-cost housing and we found basically no support for that. And I'm sure if we had a night meeting, we would find the same thing. There's probably no support for that, for the C and D locations. I see some comments and concerns about downzoning and maybe it shouldn't occur. I have some difficulty with that myself. So I'm not sure that another three or four hours of having people come forward to tell us that they don't want low-cost housing in this area and they don't want downzoning. I think there's only about three or four issues that the commission needs to wrestle with. I envision our next meeting being one where we query staff and we do some deliberations amongst ourselves, giving staff directions to maybe bring back some modifications and then perhaps we would take public comment on the changes that we might make. But I really, I mean, I don't want to waste the county's money. We don't have a lot of it these days. They don't have enough to make their own payroll this year. So anything we can do to move this process along without spending a tremendous amount of money, I think would be appropriate. I should also mention that when we do the meeting here, it is not televised. When we do the meeting in Santa Barbara or in Santa Maria, it is televised. So as a practical matter, you probably have more people that can view the meeting by doing it in the facilities that they're set up for. So with that, I'll go to Commissioner Brown for her comments.
I think actually, Commissioner Cooney.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cooney. I have no lights today, so I don't have my normal criteria.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And commissioners, there are a couple of very strong currents in the room. I think we should acknowledge that the feeling of the valley residents is that even if they choose not to come to a meeting here, they would have a better opportunity to do so if two things happened. One, the meeting was held in this area and number two, it was held at a time when they didn't have to choose between work and coming to the meeting. It is, I will acknowledge, much more difficult for us as commissioners to interact and also to get the answers to the key questions we each have, which is going to be the nuts and bolts of our next meeting. It's going to be a very crucial meeting. But I think in light of the public's concern and I believe our commitment to the fact that this is the valley's plan, we ought to err on the side of having the meeting here at a time convenient to most people. Even if they choose not to speak, they would have the opportunity to do so.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. I would support that. I've always been a community plan person and I feel it's important to be in the area where the community plan is being developed. I have just a question about sort of our direction and where we're going. As of today's meeting, I have a lot of questions that I'd like to pose to staff and I'm wondering if it wouldn't be helpful if, I don't know if other, I'm sure other commissioners do as well, is to pose those questions so that staff have time to develop them and to come back for our next meeting and that would be the basis of the staff report for next time? I'm not sure how you want to proceed in that way.
Well, actually, quite frankly, I'm hoping to proceed that the next meeting we have on this is basic, is pretty much all commission and staff going through the various issues, making requests and doing things. And then our final meeting, and I don't anticipate much public comment in the next meeting because we're going to be giving the staff a lot of directions, corrections, and that needs to be put out. The public can view that and then make comment on the changes we make. Do you agree?
Well, I understand that, but I think maybe that since we're meeting today, that we might be shortchanging ourselves if we only have, there's two additional meetings planned beyond today. That, and I have quite a few questions.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to tell you we're not having that. I just wanted to get the dates set.
Oh, no, the dates are fine. I just feel that I'd like to have staff have that, they can work on it and then come back and we can address those issues rather than having them address them at that time. That's kind of where I am. But I would like to see it, I think 5:00 would be, I like Commissioner Valencia's recommendation of 5:00, that would be fine for me.
You're talking about the next meeting or the fourth meeting? I'm agreeable to perhaps do it on the fourth meeting, but I'm not agreeable to do it on the next meeting. The next meeting, I just see be more of us giving staff direction to either get additional information or indicating what our preferences on the changes be.
I think there needs to be another meeting in the valley. Whichever one that is, we've got two more. Perhaps Commissioner Brooks could speak to her district and I think we need to hear from her.
Patricia Brooks.
Yes, thank you. I know I'm sitting here with about five pages of questions and I feel that, not that I'll do all of them, but I would like to get those questions out to staff today. I mean, we are trying to bring closure to this process by the end of June. If we were to do the evening meeting, I would like to see it, firstly, I would like to see it no later than the June 3rd meeting. We have the June 3rd date. I believe Mr. Johnson had some other dates. And then, you know, when many of the questions can be addressed on June 3rd here in the community, I'm sure of the statements that were made publicly today, those two will come back and staff will be addressing some of those issues that were brought forward. I think to have those brought out again in front of the community here on June 3rd would be appropriate. And then we can just hopefully then have the final meeting at the end of June at whatever area we need to have it. And that would be my suggestion. But I do hope today that, you know, we will get to have some time for our own questions to staff. Thank you.
So I believe, I think I heard consensus that our next meeting will be gathered in Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, and we'll take a look at the fourth meeting.
No. I think, I think you heard that the next meeting probably should be here as a response once we give those questions to Mr. Johnson and then the last meeting would be deliberation probably and finalization of the plan.
Okay. All right. I, you know, sorry, for budgetary purposes, I'm not going to make that motion. So if somebody else wants to make a motion to set the date, place for the next meeting, they can do so.
I will make that motion that the next meeting will be held on June 3rd here at the Solvang Auditorium at an appropriate time. I think there is one other issue for the June 3rd meeting. So I don't know, maybe we would want to help start even earlier than 5:00 considering we have that other issue. Get that out of the way and then start the continuation of our discussion of the community plan at 5:00. Mr. Johnson, that's my motion.
Chair Blau and members of the commission, I think that the June 3rd meeting was intended to really get into part of the substantive deliberations and answer a lot of the questions. What I'm hearing is the commission would want to afford the public another opportunity during the evening for additional input and direction. And so my suggestion would be is if you can hold the meeting, and I've got some dates between now and June 3rd to hold a night meeting, then we can really delve into the detailed discussions with the commission on the substantive issues. Because if we're going to try to reach a conclusion and a recommendation by the 29th, we're going to need from the 3rd to the 29th to be able to make amendments to the ordinances, the resolutions, the plans, et cetera, for your final action and recommendation. So to that extent, I do have some dates on the, in the next couple of weeks for an evening meeting, the 20th and the 27th. Those are both Wednesday evenings. This facility is available. We'd also want to bear in mind, we want to give enough time for the public to be noticed about this evening meeting and get the word out to everyone so that people can show up.
I would have difficulty making a 5:00 meeting on the 20th, but I could do so on the 27th.
I'm available on the 27th.
I'm available on the 27th.
27th, okay.
I wouldn't be, Commissioner Brown can chair the meeting. Believe me, but I'll get, I get a tape of this, correct? So I will see all the comments two days later.
Mr. Chair, we are recording this meeting. Would this be both an audio and there's a video taping of the meeting? We'll look to do the same for the 27th hearing if that's the date you ultimately decide upon as well.
So I'm hearing the motion being amended that we're going to have the next hearing on the 27th here in this place at 5:00 and schedule it for 5:00 to 8:00. Is that probably enough time? And I think what, I would propose that you simply take additional public testimony that you couldn't take today. That they're not, unless you have some, well.
You know, Chair Blau, I'm not quite sure that that's, that's, I would think would be one of the important things of the meeting, but I also think that that meeting would be the opportunity that, that staff would come back with answers to our questions and then that the public would have an opportunity to amplify or agree or support or not the information that's brought back. Maybe I'm mistaken in sort of getting a sense of where the commission wants to go.
I think we have the next meeting scheduled and I believe, so that we are there for that. I think we go to commissioners' questions now unless there's some other- Commissioner Valencia.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, there were 33 speakers today and I'm sure that Mr. Johnson took all that information down, if they have it on tape, but if not, I'd be happy to give them all my notes so they could take them to refer all the names and all the comments that they made. You know, it's not that difficult to come back with, not every comment, many of them were duplicative in nature, but for instance, the main thrust was A, B, C, and D, cites A, B, C, and D. And I'm sure you got that message very strong. And the other one that had a very strong thrust was the one by Dr. Hertel and Chip and Willie and all these other people who said, you know, all these people that have these properties, they don't want to lose the value of these properties. They've been paying on them for 40 years or whatever. And, you know, that's another main thrust, you know? The others were also important, but not as major as those two items. So I'm sure you would address those things.
Mr. Chair, I have some very specific issues that I'd like staff to come back with if that's appropriate for me to give to them at this time.
Commissioner Brown, I should ask my fellow commissioners, Elizabeth Brumby would break for lunch, but I know Commissioner Cooney has to leave here at 2:00. Do we want to try and just simply conclude the meeting and do lunch after the meeting's over? Can you, everybody do that?
Well, I don't know. I think if we're going to discuss it for another hour, I'd rather go to lunch. If we're going to discuss it for 10 minutes, we can go on.
Mr. Chair, all I have are some questions I'd like to pose to staff that kind of helps to winnow the wheat from the chaff perhaps and when he comes back. So, okay. My first question has- question has to do with some of the bioresources. A couple of speakers spoke about the removal of esches, and I'd just like to have some greater understanding of that, and why that was done, and what the, and how the new language sort of reflects, or what it does to the esches. There was, I think it was you, Ms. Johnson, who made a comment about water resources and about the statement that the county will be looking at water resource issues after the plan is done. I need to have some further amplification of information on that. Mr. Murra talked about historic resources on page 14, and I would like to have a discussion of that. It was Ms. Beltranina that spoke to, about seeing the legal parcels of the downzoned site, and I'm not, if you could bring some information about that, if we could see maps to see exactly what it looks like, and someone else spoke to about not having the community plan split properties, so maybe if there are some areas where the community plan boundary does that, we can look at that. People keep mentioning about second units, about the kind of affordable housing that they provide, and I'm not sure if the county has any sort of standards or controls that ensures that second units do provide affordable housing. Maybe you can bring something back on that. Some of the issues on, let's see, it was Ms. McGinnis who spoke about the ag, and some others spoke about some ag issues, about farm stays, about dispute resolution. Somebody spoke about the soccer fields and about not taking ag out to support soccer fields. I'm not sure what, where to go with that, but those are just some of my, those are some of my issues that I would appreciate staff coming back with. And also, I spoke to Mr. Feek about providing a copy of the, you didn't provide an overlay about in the other community plans, the number of, in the rural areas, the number of ag, two parcels, I think. I'd like to just see a map, I'd like to see the statistics that you provided. Thank you.
Richard Brooks.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Blau. Many of the issues I have in my list were just very succinctly mentioned by Commissioner Brown, I appreciate that. With the affordable housing overlay, there's much reference to the core approach that was used previously, and I would like to see some numbers on that, you know, if you're using possible mixed use, if you're using farm worker housing, how might that work, that these overlays, although they might be included or zoned, would they likely be used? Perhaps you might provide me with some statistics on that. Also, I'd like to ask staff, what would an action item on perhaps the dispute resolution policy look like with the right-to-farm ordinance? I could see some wording, possible wording for that. Also, you know, more information on the ag buffer policy. I am concerned, and I would like to see some information about the farm stay issue that was brought up. I had that also listed. Something was mentioned about the possibility of LAFCO interaction or, you know, possible annexation, you know, after a community plan was done. Perhaps I'd like to see, I know I would like to see what the policies are now and how that can be avoided, you know, in the new community plan. Biological resources, I would have some curiosity about, you know, the maps that were omitted, and I think Commissioner Brown already mentioned that one. Is there any possibility that some of those maps could be at least looked at, if not included, see what the ramifications of bringing those at least into the public eye right now? The idea of the setback, I have, like to have information. The boundaries, the idea that other community plans, you know, have certain percentage of agricultural land. I appreciate that information, because I wasn't aware of that, but perhaps that issue could be looked at, you know, as far as existing boundaries, and again, the history, a 10-year history of how were those boundaries set up. Obviously, some rationales there. The ag element, being a new commissioner, there's this wonderful little document called the ag element, and it's been referred to several times today, and it's, I certainly see some places where, you know, this ag element, you know, should, I would say, you know, be referred to as a very important document. So I want to make sure that some of the ideas of the ag boundaries, the idea of what we are, what the community plan is trying to accomplish as far as its goals, and how they align themselves, you know, with the existing ag element. Be patient with me. I appreciated the information on the non-conforming ideas of lot size. I think my questions have been answered on that. Perhaps we might hear from county council next time, as far as, there was some mentioning of taxes or valuation of homes based on, you know, what might be and what was, so maybe that might be a county council question. There was a letter I've-
I think, were you talking about transfer development rights?
No, no. I did hear that, but no, I-
I don't understand what you're asking county council for. I don't think he does either. That's why I jumped in there.
Okay. There was a letter that I read, that's mentioned that possibly banks would charge higher interest rates or something like that, so that is what I would want clarification on.
Well, actually, I think the issue is one of, correct me if I'm wrong, the issue is one of a lender being unwilling or hesitant to loan on a property when it has a, it's non-conforming in its zoning. I think that was the issue, the concern was.
That's right, and I just wanted to just get a little bit more clarification of that. As far as the parks, I had asked last time about the Quinby funds, what would a action item look like, you know, within the plan itself, as far as getting, you know, the parks closer into the schools, school locations, you know, versus out into agricultural lands? The trail maps, I would like to know if staff could give some more information about the trail maps that had appeared in an earlier document, and there are some questions that people have about the connectivity of some of the trails in the existing map, or the plan map. The last one was, there was some talk about the winery issue in Los Olivos, and I would like to find out from staff, you know, how could that be brought into the plan somehow, as far as addressing, you know, some, developing some measure that might address that problem. And that's it for me.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'm in the minority here. Don't overproduce development standards and policies. We have too much government as it is. Just whatever is necessary to protect the valley, you understand what these people want. They'd like to keep the valley as it is and not destroy what they have. So, sometimes we overproduce rules and regulations. Look at what Sacramento has done to us. They've made so many rules that now they've got the state in hock, and they need more money to make more rules, you know. Let's be careful that we don't do that. There was one lady, the 25th Speaker, who said she was concerned about soccer fields on Santa Rosa Road. That was an issue about two years ago, which was brought up by a previous commissioner, and it went down 4 to 1, so there's no problem there. Those properties are not going to be converted to soccer fields or anything like that. And the other, the only thing that I heard here that was, something that was very important, is a fellow who has 100 acres near 154, and he said, you're going to have an overlay there, and half of his land is below in a dip, you know, you're not going to look at it, so look at things like that. You know, you have to go out and look at these properties. And that's all, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In partial response to Commissioner Valencia, I totally agree. I think the people in the room and who have been in the room this morning have the best sense of the need to protect the valley. It's just, it's in the details of how we do that, that our hard work begins, and so something like the trails, and why the trails aren't drawn on the maps in this plan as opposed to prior plans. Every community plan I've been connected with has always had a trail portion going across private lands. The ability to acquire easements over those lands is a totally different issue, but at least you have a plan to draw from if and when those trails become reality. So, the concern I have is that we might be looking at additional environmental review if we redo the trails at this time. So I'd like to have staff answer the question as to what we can do in terms of amending the proposed plan without invoking further environmental review.
Thank you. And for myself, you were very diligent, providing us the map that I asked for last time that talked about the non-conforming uses. I'm now concerned about the number of properties that are downzoning and really what happens to them. I didn't like a couple stories I heard this morning about, you know, losing actual development rights or losing building rights. I still have the same concern about the changes in the rules for things like setbacks. So what I'd like to see is on the properties that we're downzoning, if we get them identified by, and not on a great big map, I mean, I think there's only 100 of them, am I correct? So if we could get assessed or sized parcel maps, so that I could see what the actual size of the property is and what the zone is going from to. Frankly, I'm inclined not to do that unless the property owner agrees, because that's kind of always been my bent. I agree with that today. The other problem that I have is that you're proposing that a mixed use require onsite affordable unit as part of it, and that is actually, I think, in strict contravention of what the board approved when the Affordable Housing Committee met two and three years ago and made certain recommendations. We recommend that that not be a requirement, if I remember correctly, because it's not good, it really doesn't work as a practical matter. There are better ways to do affordable housing, as we have seen in the last few months, a couple of projects came before us, and I don't think having 25% in the mixed use makes sense. I seriously doubt anybody's going to agree to A, B, C, and D for affordable housing mix. I had problems with the airport issue, but, you know, that's another issue. But I would like to see which sites are actually getting downzoned and how they're being affected. I also am, be curious, in my view, not having the second residential units is also a downzoning. So those properties that could no longer have a residential second unit, I'd like to see those listed as well, just so I know who it is. I'll make one last final comment. I did get a copy of the notice that was filed, that was sent out, and the list of property owners that received them, because I had some concerns in the last meeting that people weren't notified correctly. And I will say that although the legal standard's probably there, what bothered me in the notice was, your property is being considered for rezoning. It didn't say your property's going to be rezoned from this to this, which is how I normally see notices, and that would give me concern. If you told me that my property was going to go from commercial manufacturing to open space, you got my attention. But to simply say that I'm part of a community plan and my property's being considered, I'm not sure gave people adequate notice that what was going to happen. So, I don't know how you solve that problem, but if we're having at least two more meetings, and if we make a list of properties that are easily identifiable as to which ones are going to get rezoned, I'm sure that we can get, you know, maybe 99% of people notified, they have an opportunity to come before this commission and voice their opinion, or, you know, either way. Those are my comments. Any other commissioner comments? Ms. Black, do you have anything for us?
Mr. Chair, no, I think you just need to take a motion to adjourn your meeting to May 27 at 5:00 at this location when you're ready.
So do I have someone that will make that motion?
I so move.
I'll second.
Ms. Hoppen, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
No vote.
Vote carries-
I did not, I did not vote.
4-1.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our meeting. We'll see you again on the, I guess, the 6th.